Joe, that everybody's present, please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we've got the rule of previous meetings. Need a motion for that. So move into second.
Second.
Second Commissioner Warlow, any corrections? You do? Okay. Anybody have a question? Not all those in favor, if they buy a tie, I'll go opposed, nobody, five zero. I don't have any citizen's comments, nobody filled out the forms? Anybody in the audience want to say something? All right, let's go now to item six, presentation by Mr. Heskey, Matines Tech Employee Benefits Consultant.
Morning, Judge.
Uh, just a quick handout here. If you turn to the back of the page, I kind of, because he took my presentation towards the back, so I apologize for that, but, uh, Mr. Vela and HR had asked maybe to come over here to kind of just talk about maybe possibly looking at some plan options coming this renewal, but before we do that, I kind of want to get into where we're at as far as renewal. Last year's renewal was, was a pretty good renewal. We had a pool average, down to 1.85% as far as the pool average has been making. So that was unbelievable here. I don't know when we're going to see one like that again, but, uh, but the bottom line is we already received a great renewal, it's because the high claims just weren't there, okay, throughout the whole pool. Uh, and the purpose of the pool is to, is to spread out that risk in order to keep, keep costs down, okay? That's the purpose of membership of the pool. Now, uh, as far as right now, the current trend, uh, and the claims are much different compared to last year's. So there's, uh, a limit to our high claims, okay, uh, throughout the whole pool, and the trend is running around maybe close to about eight percent right now, okay? So it's a bit higher compared to what we were looking at last year, all right? So, uh, on that first page where I just have, there's a plan year 2016, I just have your, your medical rates, where your current, we said that line. Uh, towards the bottom, uh, I wanted to put some information on here regarding the average rate increases for the past full plan year. Uh, county has been doing very, uh, pretty well. The average increase was a negative, or a negative 10%, so it's great for the, for the county to keep, uh, those premiums down and everything. Uh, surplus distribution is the money that the county receives, all our pool members receive a surplus distribution, uh, over the past full plan years, uh, it's been, it's been over, uh, two hundred, around $242,000. So I'm just kind of wanting to show you that as of right now, the county is, uh, really performing very well and benefiting, uh, into the pool. Uh, if you turn to the next page, uh, I just got brought some options, and, um, your current plan, uh, the county still offers a very generous, um, benefit to their employees. Uh, the current in-network deductible for individuals at 250 deductible, which is, uh, out in the private sector and out, uh, out there, uh, I don't think hardly anybody's really offering a 250 deductible for their employees. Uh, the county is still paying 100% of the employee premium, which is great, that's a great benefit for the employees, uh, and we want to try to keep that as long as possible and keep costs down and keep your premiums down as well. Uh, but just to kind of give the court an idea, should the court decide to change their plan, and usually, uh, when somebody, uh, looks at changing their plan, they look at the, uh, individuals deductible, okay? So right now, uh, under the current plan year, under that first column, Plan 600 is the tax plan that you currently have, and the RX Austin is 4A. Uh, the 4A means that, uh, your current co, uh, co-claims, your individual prescription is $10 for generic, 25 for, uh, the, the non-brand names, and then $30 for the more expensive, uh, prescriptions. But if you look at option one, Plan 800 NG, so keep in mind, if you do change your plan, currently right now, the county, uh, the Affordable Care Act is still in place, okay? We're seeing legislation coming out, uh, we had a bill passed through the House just recently, uh, the Senate has, uh, still has to look at it, so there could be some changes coming to the Affordable Care Act, okay? So we're, we're hanging on tight, but we have to let you know, everything is still in place as of right now. So that means the grandfather status and the non-grandfather status, the provision there, if you change your plan so much from what you currently have now, your plan has not changed, uh, since March of 2010, when the Affordable Care Act came into place. So you, uh, the court has decided to remain grandfather, and majority of our pool members decided to remain grandfather, and we're talking about almost, what, 80% mark, our pool, our pool members have remained grandfather, they haven't changed their plan, okay? Which is a good thing, uh, they're able to still pay those premiums, okay? Uh, but if you do change your plan, as you see the next step from a 250 deductible, if you move to a $500 deductible for the individual, that's under Plan 800 NG. NG means non-grandfather. So just by moving, uh, changing your deductible by two, uh, increasing it by 250, it moves you to non-grandfather status. So what does that mean? Non-grandfather status means there are certain provisions in the Affordable Care Act that the, um, the plan has to, has to cover certain, uh, preventative services, such as like well exams, uh, there's a huge list that the federal government has on their website that says it, uh, has to be paid as a preventative service, okay? And, uh, so for a non-grandfathered plan, those preventative services have to be covered at 100%. No co-pay, the employee is not subject to a co-pay deductible or your co-insurance, okay? So the plan pays 100%, all right? Which is a, which is a good, which is a good thing for the employees, because nothing's coming out of their pocket, but the plan is paying 100% more of those claims, okay? So it's, uh, taking on more of those claims, more than what's, I guess you'd say, okay? So, uh, non-grandfathered plans are a little bit, they are a little more expensive, simply because there's less cost sharing with the employee. Uh, but I do want, uh, with your current rates, uh, with the current, uh, now, should you change to a 800, non-grandfathered plan to $500 deductible, uh, from your current rates now, if you move to that plan, uh, you can see it's about a 2% savings, okay? If you move to a $500 deductible, all right? If you look at option two, Plan 1100, that individual deductible goes up to 750. And I kind of wanted to show a gradual increase, just to kind of get, get you a picture, not sure how much, if you, if the court decides to, to change the plan, if you do decide, you may want to do it gradually, uh, not do, uh, go from the 250 maybe to 1,000, uh, that might shock a lot of employees by going through that big of a jump, but I kind of just wanted to show you what kind of increments that you can kind of get an idea if you should choose to, uh, change your, your plan. So if you look at Plan 1100 NG, that's with a 750 deductible, okay? With that type of change, uh, the court can see with their plan, their plan right now, uh, it's about a 4% savings, okay? Option three, with a $1,000 deductible, uh, it's around a 7% savings. And with option four, there's a $1,500 deductible, I didn't want to go higher than that, but with a $1,500 deductible, it could be around 11% savings, okay?
It's a saving to the county, but our employees are going to be putting up, in a lot of money.
Uh, will the county still, uh, I mean, the employees still pay, uh, $0?
Yeah, because your deductibles and everything go up.
Right, right, and that, and that's, that's, uh, well, they're, well, yes, so when you go up, when you go up in deductible, uh, the co, after the co-insurance pays, the 20%, yes, you have a, a higher maximum, absolutely, yes, you're correct. So, and I want definitely bring that up, that co-insurance max is out, uh, that turning right now with your plan, that $2,000, uh, that's your 20%, once you, once somebody needs their 250 deductible, the insurance pays 80%, and then that 20% comes out of the employee's pocket. And once that 20% reaches 2,000, that's when the plan pays 100%. And Commissioner Owens is correct, so as you can see, as we get, go down to increasing the options, that auto pocket maximum increases as well, just as the deductible. Uh, so just, just think about it this way, yes, you'll be saving on premium by changing the plan, increasing the deductible, increasing the auto pocket maximum, but there's still, uh, there's still money coming out of the, uh, employee's pocket.
Can we not set up a health savings plan for our employees? Will we set aside money to assist with the, um, deductible?
Uh, that's entirely to the county if they, if they would like to do that. Uh, I've seen some counties, they have like a 750 deductible right now, um, and once an employee reaches their deductible, they'll bring in their EOB, their Explanation of Benefits, to, uh, to, uh, to the county, HR, uh, and then they will subsidize a certain amount of it. I think that will take your county to subsidize 500 bucks, 500, $500. So, so technically, it's 250 deductible for the employees.
Mr. Matines, do you have a coffee?
I should, I'm sorry.
Just because she can't follow.
I'm sorry.
Can we run the numbers on that and see what it looks like?
Sure, if I don't have any guidance.
No, no, I understand, I mean, I know you don't, but, see what the numbers would look like versus the savings versus a, 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 a health plan that, that, from the 250, let's say we went to 500, where we set aside 250 to assist with the deductible, what, what would the numbers look like? Or at, at different rates? Now, my biggest concern that I've always had is, is the cost to the family. It is so expensive, that none of our employees, I think there's only two or three that actually can afford to cover their families, um, and I've always wanted to see if we can do something to find a plan where they can afford to get on to something for their wives and their children and everybody else, it's, it's very, very difficult.
And I'm glad you brought that up. If you turn to that next page, I do have a cost sharing analysis, that can just, just kind of draws a picture of, uh, who's meeting their deductible, okay? How many employees are meeting their deductible? Uh, please disregard where it says 250, that deductible paid ban, it says there's one person there, I don't know where that really came out, I think that's a glitch or something, but that's just, uh, please disregard that. So as you can see, you have about 62% of your employees not even, um, contributing toward the deductible, okay? So, uh, it, and then towards your co-insurance, you have, uh, about 65% of people not even putting the money toward, in other words, they're not paying the money.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out, is if, if, if we go to a higher deductible, set aside funds to assist with the, the deductible, is there a savings? If you're at 60 something percent that's not using it, you're saving the, you're saving a chunk of money. But we need to run the numbers on it and see what it looks like.
You're talking about going to an HSA route?
Go, go to a higher deductible, but set aside a, a, uh, a health savings plan where we would assist them between the 250 and whatever the other deductible is, let's say we went to 750, or, or whatever that number is, then we would assist the employee with helping to pay for that cost and see if that savings is in there to do that.
Yeah, just.
Typically, the HSA has to be a lot higher than 750.
Right, I mean, we can, we can, we can go directly to an HSA if you'd like to, or possibly look at maybe, uh, like a dual option plan, which, uh, you have your current plan or you, you change it, and then you also have an HS, HSA, which is a health savings account plan, uh, which is a much higher deductible, as Mr. Longard mentioned, uh, our HSA plans, uh, start at, uh, I think it's 25, no, no, 3,000, and then, and then this plan with $4,000 deductible. So what that means with the HSA plan, um, they, they keep contributing towards our health savings account, the employee, uh, the employer can contribute towards that account?
I'm not asking that the employee does it. What I'm talking about is, is if we raise the, the deductible on these plans, and then we set aside funds to assist, let's say we go to a $1,000 deductible, 7% savings, we, we set aside $750 for that employee to assist with their deductible, that can bring in. If we're only using, if 60% of our employees are not using that, according to this, 62% are not even meeting their deductible, you're saving 7%, plus you have the money over here that if you're only using, if 62% of them aren't using it, you're, you still have a savings on that side. I'm, I'm trying to see what those numbers look like.
Right, and it's got, and it'd be hard to do, every year you'd have to, you'll have to budget to see.
No, I understand, but, you know, I'm just trying to see what those numbers look like, I'm not saying we're going to go that way. I'm not asking the employee to pay more, what I'm asking is, is can we save money and still get them something that works?
Well, that's something internally that, that the county can definitely do.
And then at that, it would bring down some of the cost to the employees' families to maybe where they can start affording some of that, the insurance for their families, because it's, it's difficult.
And he's still going to need to be involved, you need, we need his numbers to be in.
Yeah, and, and just kind of, and these are based off, you know, the, the current rates right now, okay, these percentages and everything, but just to, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what it looked, for some reason, if the county receives, uh, as I said, they were going to receive a 6% increase for this coming up.
Yes.
If you move to one of these plans, uh, if you move to the $500 deductible, it's going to be a 4% increase, okay? So just to kind of, just want to kind of give you an idea of basically what the numbers would look like. But, but once the renewal comes out, okay, I can definitely give you some hard numbers on, uh, on, on any of these plans or any of the plans, uh, the court would like to look at, uh, once.
Only question I have on, on that you're describing, is what happens if we run out of money at the pool level that we've set aside to pay for the employees?
Well, you wouldn't, because you would budget the, um, the, the amount of the difference in that deductible, so if we went to a $1,000 plan, and they're, they're currently going to continue paying their 250, you're budgeting the amount for that, uh, $750. If you don't utilize all that, then you put it back in the general fund, next year you can create a budget. You're, you're just going to budget within these numbers, you're, to, to see, to see if you have enough savings within the reduction in costs, and they'll care to set this up over here where those numbers kind of balance themselves out.
Right.
So if you're not using, if 62% of the people are not using their deductible, in theory, if that continues, you should still have a 62% savings in that cost.
Well, you described here that the, the HRA versus the HSA, they, they don't tap into their, uh, they, they don't tap into their, uh, deductible, or add an advantage to the HSA route.
And, and I'm curious to see if the numbers work and we can bring the cost down, and some of the employees can afford to get their families on it. That's all I want to look at. I'm not advocating that we, we, we ask the employee to pay more in their deductible, we'll have to figure out if that offsets itself.
And the employees already have an HSA kind of thing, with what, what they're session, whatever they are now. So it would be something completely separate, I mean, the employees are already set up now, right? So y'all are setting up something for the county to contribute on.
Yes, yeah. I just want to see if the numbers work, that's all.
Absolutely. Uh, the, the board is actually, our management is meeting with our actuary firm and everything, uh, in about a week or so to start crunching numbers. Uh, we're going to present, uh, we're going to give our recommendations to our board on June 9th, um, and then from there, the board will make the decision on what the rates will be and everything for this coming up calendar. Um, we expect the, uh, the renewal to come out a little bit earlier, uh, about two weeks earlier. Everything will be electronic, so, uh, every, um, contact that we have is designated, uh, um, contact authority, the primary contact, the affiliate contact, will receive the renewal via email, okay? Uh, and the cool thing about it is that, uh, there will be some things that where the county can electronically, uh, probably it'll be, uh, Ms. Vela, she has access to the Oasis system, which is our eligibility system that she uses, she puts on and off, takes off the employees, uh, she's able to print out everything electronically, which would be a pretty good, uh, thing, a lot easier too, uh, and, uh, and I can come back and also present the renewal at that time as well too, and assist her and, uh, and do that as well, so, yes, sir.
Real quick, option one you said, option one, two, three, and four, you went, you said percentages that it would be higher than the current plan. Option one was what, 4%?
Uh, option one, you'll be, you'll.
Savings.
It'll be 2% savings, yes, sir.
And then option two?
Option two, 4%.
Uh huh.
And then option three will be 7, and option four will be 11, okay? So basically, when you're, when you're decreasing your deductible, increasing your, your co-insurance maximum, uh, the premiums do decrease.
No, I, I was just asking because, I mean, you're throwing out what we'd be saving to 4, and that's what I was asking our HR director, and what we were paying for, for employee, how many employees we have right now.
Yeah.
Kind of way to give us an idea of what we'd be saving in order to be able to get to what Commissioner Nelson wants to get to.
Absolutely, uh, the employee-only premium right now is 455 dollars and 96 cents, uh, with a 250 deductible, uh, that, that is a pretty good premium, you know, it is a pretty good premium considering, uh, what people are paying out there in the private sector, uh, it's an outstanding benefit. I know a lot of people would love, love to have what the benefits that the county has here, but county employees don't get paid compared to what other people are getting paid.
You didn't need to say that. You really didn't want to say that.
But, uh, but since the county is paying 100% of their employee premium, you know, that employees need to look at, you know, that's part of their, uh, employee package, you know, their, their benefit package and everything, so, um, but yes, yeah, uh, if we can keep, you know, uh, everything affordable as much as possible, but if, uh, if anything could be made, uh, plan change, then, uh, we can definitely go for it, that's what too.
Juanita, what are you hearing from the employees?
I wanted to say that, um, the thing that the employees have right now with the plan is, most of our employees that enroll under the health is because of child support. Uh, there's a divorce, and they have to cover the children. A lot of our employees do have spouses that have employment that offers insurance, so they choose not to put the, the wife or the kids on their plan, because they get a better plan where they're at.
They get a cheaper plan, not better.
Yeah, it's, it's a give or take, you know, it's, it's an option, so.
But we still have a lot of employees that their families don't have any insurance.
And, yeah, and I don't know what the numbers are, I can look at that, but it's, that's a choice that the employee has to make. A lot of the employees that come back in is because they get noticed that now they've got to provide coverage, because they lost coverage where they're at, or the kids lost coverage, so they come onto the county, and they do have to pay the high premiums.
How many employees do we have that pay for their family?
Hmm.
Last I heard, there was like five or six, there wasn't many.
That's, I can, I can check, I can get you.
Juanita, the payment for the premiums, is that pre-taxed?
Yes, and, and the employee also, you know, we have the cafeteria plan, um, a lot of our employees enroll in the flexible spending, like Commissioner Nettleton was mentioning, setting money aside, there's employees that have medical conditions or other expenses that are related to medical, and they put money into flexible spending and draw money every month out of that.
But there are some new gifts, HSA and HSA.
That is correct, absolutely. Um, I know there's been a lot of talk about, uh, counties are very worried about the excise tax, the Cadillac tax, that's, that's, uh, in the Affordable Care Act, you know, that was initially supposed to get in place in 2018, that was delayed to 2020, okay? Uh, with, with whatever's coming into the legislation, the new, uh, bill that may be coming out, uh, they're, they're even thinking about maybe pushing that back to, uh, 2025.
What do you mean, Kelly?
Cadillac tax is a, is an excise tax that they're, um, they're, an employer would have to pay, uh, if they're paying too much for their employer-only premium. There's a threshold that the government has set, um, which is around, I want to say, um, $850 for the, uh, a monthly premium, about $850. So if, if the county is paying more than $850 for their employer-only premium, which some counties are, okay, they're over that threshold, the difference between the threshold, uh, multiply that times 40%, and then multiply it by the number of employees, and that's your excise tax, and that's.
So they're, they're, they're going to tax you for providing insurance?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That's about the stupidest thing ever.
So, uh, so even though if an employer's plan affords, uh, the benefit that they are, that they're offering, um, you know, that's, that's their choice to do that, but the government's saying they're setting thresholds, if you're paying too much for a certain, and same thing, if you're not offering coverage, enough coverage, okay? You have to meet, uh, 60% of, uh, of, uh, of our benefits.
I think Kelly brought it up, brought that up two years ago, I think.
Yeah, and, uh, so if.
But I mean, we, we, we weren't close to.
No, 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 all, all of our tax plans meet the minimum requirements and everything, uh, but yes, so if, if you're not offering enough coverage, you would qualify as well too. So they're trying to get everything kind of, uh, a little bit more fair playing field that everybody can, uh, can afford, and, uh, and can have the same amount of coverage too.
Have they seen the prices on the exchange?
Uh.
Everything is above 850 bucks.
And that, and that goes to the dependents who are not able to get on to the county too, when they go to the public exchange, or to the public exchange out there, uh, at healthcare.gov, the, uh, the premiums are, are pretty high too.
Those premiums on a plan like this, much from 500 a month to 1,200 a month.
Yeah, that's, yeah, anything that's really affordable, you're going to be paying like maybe a $3,000, $4,000 deductible, uh, the average, uh, I want to say American, but I think the average deductible, gratification is maybe, what, 2,500, Mark? About 2,500, that's what, average, what people are, uh, are paying for, for his deductible for their plan.
In order to get down to a $400 a month premium, you've got to have at least a $20,000 deductible on the exchange.
Wow, yeah, that's, yeah.
If we were to improve Valverde's stats, and then improve our rates?
Sure, absolutely, and that's what, that's what, uh, Mark's going to come up and, and talk about, um, I don't want to get into, uh, are still his thundering like that, but the whole, the whole thing is, and maybe this will be in production, regardless of, uh, if you do change your plan or not, okay, you're going to be saving on premium, okay? But we have to promote wellness as much as possible, and that's good, because ultimately, keeping plans down, those high-cost claims, okay, those high-cost claims, keep them down, that's going to keep your, uh, your rates down, all right? So, um, that means the healthier your employees are, that means they're not going to the doctor, okay? And, uh, but if you need to go to the doctor, you go to the doctor, but, um, and like I said, as long as we keep those high-cost claims down as much as possible, it'll keep your, your premiums down as well too. Because we cannot control the cost of what doctors and hospitals are charging, we can't cha, uh, we can't count what the pharmaceutical companies are charging for all these drugs, okay? It's amazing how much, uh, the cost is skyrocketing on these prescription drugs and everything, so, uh, but if we keep people not needing any medication, there's no plan to be paid, so, and that will definitely keep costs down. Any questions about, uh, the finished option plans? Once the renewal comes out, uh, I just have to be asked to come up to the court, I can bring alternate plans, alternate options with their rates, with, uh, which will improve their rates as well, and I can come back for another, uh, Commissioner's court business.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Before we go to the next item, would you all three stand for a moment of silence? Sunday, Judge George Thurman passed away, so let's have a moment of silence for him. Yeah, next we have presentation, Mark Solis, Wellness Consultant, Health and Benefits Service Productives. Good to ask you for.
Yes, Solis, very good, thank you, uh, Judge, and gentlemen of the court, and ladies, so I'll try to keep this very brief, um, I'd like to address a few overview things before I get into the meat of my presentation, simply to say that Ernesto Hammer actually talked about this morning, and, uh, you know, he, he brought up the, the excise tax and the fact that the threshold is 850, and, you know, an argument for staying with the current plan that you have is the fact that I am not aware of another county that has as generous a plan with rates down below $600. He said we have plans with, you know, 700, 800 plus, 900 plus a month per employee, uh, with the same or less generous benefits plans. So you guys actually, just because of your, your, you know, the past history of your plans over the past 10, 15 years with the pool, your rates are exceptionally low for the generosity of your plan. Another thing I'd like to say is, Commissioner Owens, you're absolutely right, anytime you change a plan, you are effectively transferring the cost to employees when, if your employee gets sick or has a major medical issue, and that, that is why, uh, we have the Healthy County Program and why the TAC Healthcare Pool tries so hard to assist counties in coming alongside their employees and giving them all the tools and encouragement and empowerment to stay as healthy as possible. Commissioner Nettleton, uh, your idea for an additional HSA and then funding that is, 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 you know, perhaps could be a really good direction to go. One suggestion I would make would be that, uh, you might, if you decide to go in that direction, that you might want to consider, uh, requiring something in return for the employees to get that deductible, um, cover whatever the county would subsidize, and by way of a wellness incentive, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, but that would be a, a great mechanism to. minutes, but that would be a, a great mechanism to encourage the employees to do some things that might, might help them with their health or prevent future disease down the road. Um, do you all mind if I use this? Is this here for...
My turn.
That's for you.
Okay. Good. So, um, I put this slide on here, uh, and perhaps you've seen it before because I've used it in some other presentations, but the bottom line is that eighty percent of your healthcare costs are, uh, either directly caused by lifestyle or very closely related to lifestyle. Why is this important? Let me say that again. Eighty percent of your costs are lifestyle related. Okay? That means there's tremendous opportunity for you and for your employees to improve their health, their quality of life, and for the county to help manage or control costs, keep those costs down. Now, certainly, there's some things, preemie babies, certain cancers that you can't do anything about, right? There's those, those unknowns. But by and large, a lot of what the, the, the health problems and health issues that we suffer from are lifestyle related. And this is, uh, from the Robert Johnson Foundation, that we see that, you know, these are, are four of the major chronic diseases, uh, in America, but also right here in Valverde County. And this is the percent of each of those that is directly attributable to lifestyle. That does two things, or maybe three things. One, it means we can prevent a lot of these diseases. Two, if a person's already diagnosed with it, we can manage it. And, and three, um, we may be able to completely reverse it using lifestyles. Less of cancer, but, let's say, type two diabetes, it's quite possible to completely reverse type, type two diabetes with lifestyle. And I've worked with, with people in counties, you know, Roden Bridge Crew in Siker County, Roden Bridge Crew Manager diagnosed with diabetes. Over the course of three years, you know, lost eighty pounds, started using our wearable fitness device program, participating in challenges, paying attention to what he was eating, lost eighty pounds, went from five medications to one, blood sugar normal. Lifestyle. That's more powerful than leaving drugs and pharmaceuticals. So there's great opportunity here. Um, if we move to the next slide, uh, this looks at, uh, fitness level and cardiovascular disease deaths. And essentially, what we see is that for, uh, for males, um, a, a male who is, uh, and here we're talking physically, aerobically fit, has, uh, eight times less chance of dying of a heart attack, stroke, or congestive heart fail, failure than a man who is unfit. And for women, it's a, it's a higher ratio. You have sixteen times lower risk of dying of a heart attack. And that's still the number one cause of death for all men and women and in America, all races. So this is, this is, you know, key information, and this is why TAC puts such great resources towards the Healthy County Program, towards the Wearable Device Program, because this actually, and probably ninety percent of people who use it inspire greater levels of exercise and fitness. You know, I mean, uh, if, if they came out with a pill that said we could reduce heart disease by sixteen times, it'd be a billion dollar blockbuster drug. But you can't do it with a pill. You can only do it by addressing the things that cause the disease in the first place. And so if our lifestyle is causing these diseases, if we make changes to our lifestyle, it will change the outcome.
Is that what you have on your list there?
Yes. This is a, a Garmin Vivo Smart HR, which, by the way, you, as, as county employees, and I, I came here and presented on this, what, a month and a half ago, a few months ago, all of your employees are eligible for a subsidized device and free access to the entire program. It's already part of your, part of your benefits, uh, that, uh, that TAC provides. Um, let's look at a few statistics, um, for your county. So, uh, annual physicals are something that we know are, are critically important. Um, within the TAC Healthcare Pool, which has roughly forty-five, forty-eight thousand members, we know that members who get an annual physical cost twenty-two percent less per year than people who don't. So getting an annual physical is critical because it's gonna help make members, uh, your employees aware of their health status, aware of their numbers. And if you're aware of something, you can do something proactive to change it. The second thing is those high cost claims that Ernesto was talking about, you're gonna catch them earlier. If you have an annual physical, you're gonna catch something, say a cancer, when it's stage two rather than stage four, when it's either hugely expensive or untreatable. Right? So these are all good reasons to, to, to do something like this. Unfortunately, only thirty-four of your, percent of your employees got an annual physical. We have counties where ninety-plus percent of the employees are getting an annual physical. Talk about that more in a minute. Nineteen percent of your ladies got a mammogram last year. Pretty low percent. Um, we have an annual gift card program as part of the Healthy County Program. The, the activities and requirements for it change every year. Last year, twenty-one of your employees or eight percent of your insured employees got the gift card. Um, currently, we're running a Sprint in motion challenge using the, the wearable devices, and you have forty-one members or sixteen percent of your employees participate. Uh, and when I come and do these trainings, typically, we have a dozen, maybe eighteen people in the room. Um, which brings us to, okay, so what can we do differently? You know, I, my job is to help you do your job and help the county save money, help your employees improve their health, quality of life, energy level, feel better, all of that. And so here's what I would suggest to go, whether or not you change the benefits this coming year, uh, or in future years, um, that I would like to suggest that at the court, you know, you, this is, this is your deal. You can say, no, we don't want any part of this. And that's fine. We'll respect that. We're here to serve you and what you want. But our recommendation would be you make a choice to embrace the Healthy County Program at a greater level and start working with us to proactively implement some things that will help your employees become more engaged and more proactive. And certainly, you know, if the stats I give you in the graph, yes, it is true, lifestyle makes a difference, but if only a very small percent of your employees are doing anything about it, it's not gonna have much of an impact, right? So the key here is helping your employees get more engaged. And it's really a twofold, uh, uh, thing here that, that is needed. One, um, uh, you know, ownership of the program and, and engagements by you all. You know, leading by example in something is, is critically important. Um, and, and you all have the power to say to, you know, the employees within your precincts, you know, Mark's coming here for, for a training on stress management or a training on weight loss. We need you to go. Not only are we gonna say, you know, you can take your hour here or your hour there, because usually you typically set up a couple of presentations, encourage to go, you know, encourage your employees to get your annual physical, all that sort of thing, um, to, to, to release them to go and encourage them to go. Uh, and I'm not just talking about the trainings, but any and all parts and pieces. You know, we have, in, in, in other counties, we have, uh, commissioners who are very actively involved in, in the fitness program. You know, they're losing weight, they're getting in their steps, they're, they're setting up competitions between departments or between precincts, um, uh, between offices, sheriff's office involved, you know, everything, working together to, to, to try and, and get everybody in the county as, as healthy as, as possible. The other piece is the incentives, and I like to liken this to, you know, a speed bump. Anybody here, you don't have to raise your hand, but if you, if you ever lost forty pounds, have you quit smoking, have you quit drinking? Like, making a big lifestyle change, that's, that's a shift, right? It's not easy. It takes some major effort, and it takes a, a, uh, emotional, even if you will, a spiritual commitment to that change. And an incentive is like, like, like an impetus to help us as employees get over that speed bump of change, right? It helps us get from the point of, well, maybe I'll think about doing this, to, you know what, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get this and that and that for doing it, or it's gonna prevent this from doing it, and therefore, uh, I'm, I'm willing to, to make the change and, you know, then, then, let's say, a month or two after walking every day and using this, oh, wow, you know what, I, I've lost five pounds and I haven't even started diving. And I feel better. Dang, this is, you know, and then it starts becoming internally motivating to keep doing it, to keep staying with that healthy lifestyle stuff. So I'm not gonna go into the great detail of, of how to set up an incentive program right now. Um, what I would like to recommend is that the court, uh, perhaps nominate a small committee, probably of, uh, Ms. Barrera and a few other, uh, people, maybe even one of you as commissioners, if you're willing to join the committee, and work with me to come up with what would be a good incentive program for your employees, how would we structure it, what activities would be required, uh, and then come back to the court and present that in, I don't know, a couple or three months, uh, for, for a possible way forward. Um, only because without an incentive, again, uh, uh, you know, looking at other counties, um, that do have incentives in place, we're getting eighty, ninety percent engagement of employees in those counties. And it's starting to have, make a difference in their health outcomes.
This item doesn't allow that. Should you bring it back to us? To try to put a committee together?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I may add, two years ago, um, we had employees participate in the Healthy County Awareness, and the county received a hundred dollars. That's because we had four employees. Last year, we had seventy-one employees sign up, get their Fitbit and everything, but we ended up only with twenty employees actually completing the whole challenge. And that's when we, we got the five hundred and sixty-something dollars. So if we have more participation and everybody getting involved, I send out notices every week, you know, and sometimes I guess people see it over and over again, you know, come on, get moving, let's go, let's eat, let's walk, let's step. I mean, it's, it's all, we've got everything set up to download the information, get it into the TAC Wellness, and, and, I mean, do something for your employees. It's very, very important. And another thing I may add, Judge, uh, to Commissioner, I mean, Middleton's question, we have forty-six employees that have their, um, either wife, child, children enrolled.
That's a lot more than what we've ever had.
Yeah, it used to not be that.
Yeah, and it's increased, it's increased.
So you used to have like two or three.
Yes, sir.
So Juanita, can you, for next month's meeting, can you bring up, uh, committee?
Okay.
I would like to expand that committee, too.
Okay.
Okay. I do have my Fitbit and I walk about three to four miles.
Good for you, good for you. So, so, in conclusion, I just, I'd like, I'd like to say that Ms. Barrera and her assistant, Neri, they're doing a fabulous job. But to, for a wellness program to be successful within any organization, it needs more than a couple gung-ho helpers and cheerleaders. It needs support of the organizational leadership, and it needs incentives in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. All right, next we have a presentation by Jose Guerrero, Public Nurse, Health Nurse, RN, on the twenty-sixteen Annual Report, showing, uh, regional white, uh, activities and local activities.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. [inaudible]. These are, uh, [inaudible]. Okay. Our agency covers twenty-seven, uh, twenty-seven counties in Texas. And, uh, this basically tells you what the activities that are going on in twenty-seven counties. Our county here in, in Del Rio, well, I'm, I'm here in, oh, the station, the station here. That was a long time ago. And, uh, I cover Valverde and Maritza. And, uh, the main things that we do here is, uh, basically study, educate the community about, uh, preventing disease and injury and promoting health. Um, we do immunizations for kids twice a week, do STD testing and treatment for people that don't have any insurance or don't have a doctor. Uh, we provide passenger safety courses and teaching parents how to, uh, install and adjust, uh, infant, uh, safety car seats. Uh, we monitor the, whenever there's a mom that's pregnant and has got hepatitis B, when the baby's born, uh, we, we, uh, provide ma, uh, case management for, for that, make sure the kid, the baby gets the immunoglobulin and, and hepatitis B vaccines, and that, that the baby doesn't, uh, can get hepatitis B because of, uh, noncompliance by the mom. Um, that's basically what we do here. It's not, it's not, it's a lot more than that, but I, I wanna keep it short also, like the gentleman before me. And, uh, I don't know if you all have any, any questions. We try to, uh, provide services for, for people that don't have any insurance, any doctor, low income.
Could you get us, I don't see anywhere on here, on our, yeah, there is a phone.
And rabies, we, we, whenever anybody has rabies, we call our, our veterinarian who is, uh, located in, in Valley. And, uh, we had, for example, we had a case, um, about a couple of weeks ago where this, uh, person got bitten by a rat. And, uh, what I did was I called the veterinarian and got him on the phone so they could talk. And the person didn't really need a rabies vaccine, had been referred for rabies vaccination, but didn't need it after all.
On the Zika mosquito control, how do you guys control that?
We are, the only thing we're doing right now is recommending that, uh, uh, everybody keep, uh, for example, uh, pots, anything that can accumulate water, keep it free of water. That, that's where they're gonna lay their eggs. That's where they're gonna reproduce. We don't have anything on, they're actually working on a, on a plan to do something different, but that, that's all.
Now, we've, all, all four commissioners, I guess, what, the last two months have started spraying.
And I was out there with my house and the truck passed by.
And we've all started spraying, and then even in some of the areas where there's water, we've been throwing the little pellets for, you know.
And that was what I was trying to get, Michelle, that maybe they have any, uh...
I don't need to help, but...
And any, anything that we could use when we spray it.
I, I can tell. I'm, I'm not sure to tell you the truth. I can tell.
A pesticide or something?
Well, we've actually, I mean, we'd ordered a couple of barrels, and I know that, well, every precinct's ordered barrels of pesticide right now, to be able to spray. And I think in the last two months, all of us have been going out and spraying. I think your guys were out last weekend. Uh, so everybody's been out, all four precincts have been out spraying within their precincts.
Jose Guerrero, is there any, uh, cheek, uh, cases in this area, where you've been?
Uh, not today, not right now, not today, no. We had one, uh, I believe it was, uh, late last year, I think. But it was somebody who, uh, got infected elsewhere and came back to, to Valverde.
What is this training? It says you're forty-two animal control officers trained. What kind of training is that?
Uh, these are, I believe it's from the, uh, the veterinarian, Azonos. But it's, it's not for, for Del Rio, it's for, it includes the twenty-seven counties in Texas.
No, but I mean, if we have people that need to be trained, y'all do it, or?
Um, I, I honestly, I don't, I don't deal with that, but I think I can find out for you.
What about on the hot spots for the rabies?
For rabies, uh...
They'll do the aerial application on the baits?
They still, they're still doing the baits.
Who is that?
Uh, you don't...
Are you coordinating with them?
Uh, no, sir. The, uh, the, uh, veterinarian and his assistant take, take care of that.
Because we are in the hotspot northern part of the county for rabies.
I spoke with the...
And anthrax.
Yes, sir. They're doing, uh, they're doing the drops. I don't know how can they do, but they're still doing it. I spoke with the assistant, uh, about a week ago. We all was in Valley, and he was telling me they're still doing the drops.
When you said the veterinarian, which, who, who is that?
Edward Wozniak. Uh, last name is, uh, W-O-Z-N-I-A-K.
That's Department of Labor.
No, it's Azonos.
Can we, can we get an idea what he did? I mean, he just brought up before, doing the, the drops or whatever. You could give us an idea of what they're doing?
Uh, in fact, uh, there's been several cases in, in, one case was in precinct two where, uh, Dr. Borack, uh, he was, well, enlightened us how, uh, if they have no money to obtain the vaccine, uh, go and, and get the vaccines from, uh, Department of Health in Valley. He's been very helpful. We're in constant contact with him in our office. Uh, in relationship to the state corporate area of the county, I'm sure that, uh, patients probably deal with some of this inside the city limits.
And Commissioner Owens' precinct is a hotspot for anthrax. Christmas, we had an anthrax outbreak in, in, uh, Commissioner Owens' precinct, too.
It's bad, I got it.
I spoke to Dr. Borack because we, we had a suspected case that turned out with a cat that turned out to be four feet of cat. And, uh, as of last month, there were no confirmed cases in Regina A, in, in Valverde County of rabies.
The, the one thing that I did see was, uh, last year they had an article where, uh, I believe it was since nineteen ninety-five to... it was since nineteen ninety-five to, like, two thousand nine, I think, they had like forty-nine, forty, forty-something cases of rabies where people had contact with a bat or they woke up, you know, in their home and there was a bat somewhere, not even sure they had contact. They weren't treated, they weren't here in Texas, they were, this was all over the U.S., and they actually died from rabies. So we recommend that you don't handle a bat, you know, with your hands, and if you happen to have one bite you or that sort of thing, or have contact with one, seek medical attention immediately. But when there's rabies in a bat, it's, it's very dangerous. That's it. I'll get that information for you.
Hi, this is item nine, Lupita Galino, chairperson from the Valverde County Welfare Board, submitting names of severe, was mine, Albert, and those who got sick in the vacancies of Valverde County Child Welfare.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second. Any questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor, they can by saying aye. If aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero.
No, sorry, I am hearing you.
Yes.
Are we?
Yes. All right.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am Lupita Galino, the president for the Valverde County Child Welfare Board. And I don't know if you guys would like to ask me a reference to the applications.
I already made a recommendation, it's been bad.
Okay, great. Well, just to let y'all know, the Valverde County Child Welfare Board had a Brumford sale and everything went well. We made over nine-hundred dollars in reference to what we sold. It was a huge, you know, for sex to us, and we had a lot of donations and the community as well, you know, took.
I definitely wanted to.
And, uh, Valverde County?
If you don't have volunteers, you don't have?
We have about eighteen.
Eighteen?
Mm-hmm. And we help maybe about over three hundred children that are, you know, here of CBS.
That's great.
All right, any other questions, Lupita? Thank you, Lupita.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have item ten, Jesus Hernandez, supervisor for the Adult Protective Services, requesting Valverde Commissioners Court to help bring awareness to the issue to elder abuse by proclaiming May twenty-seventeen as elder abuse.
Motion to approve, you have a judge on it.
And a motion, and a second? All right, it says, whereas people of elderly have, or have disabilities, have contributed to general welfare of this Valverde County by helping preserve customs, convictions, and traditions, many people, whereas the residents and vital integral members of society, wisdom, and experience have enriched our lives, whereas abuse of elderly people and disabilities of domestic institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across country, whereas twenty sixteen, therefore, there were eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-four completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abused, of which fifty-one thousand six hundred were confirmed, whereas elder abuse is closely depredated because of the elderly who are being abused, finding it difficult to tell everybody, and usually ashamed of something afraid, whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, where they are good health or incapacitated in some way in poor neighborhoods and in suburbia, whereas many cases identified as adult protective services in Texas involve self-neglect and a duty as citizen to reach out to people of Del Rio. Now, therefore, I, a county judge, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty-seventeen as elder abuse prevention month.
Mr. Ed Montes isn't here today. My name is Angela Saragosa, and I'm a specialist with Adult Protective Services for the Valverde County area, and I want to thank the members of the Commissioners' Court and Honorable Judge for the privilege of recognizing and proclaiming the month of May twenty-seventeen to be elder abuse prevention month. Elder and disabled abuse happens in every state, city, and county, raising awareness and taking steps to prevent it in our communities by educating the public on the issue and what to do when they suspect abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation of elderly and disabled adults is critical. Elder abuse is extremely underreported. National estimates show that for every one case reported to Protective Services, twenty-four go unreported. If we look at financial exploitation, the most underreported allegation, national estimates say that for every one case received, forty-four go unreported. In twenty sixteen, Valverde County had a population of fifty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-six, in which nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one, which is nineteen-point-twenty-one percent, were elderly and disabled adults. During twenty sixteen, Adult Protective Services received a total of a hundred and thirty-three investigations in Valverde County. We urge people to report suspected abuse, neglect, or exploitation of an older adult or person with a disability by calling the abuse hotline at one eight hundred two five two fifty-four hundred or online at TexasAbuseHotline.org. You don't have to be certain that a situation is abusive or neglectful, we'll look into it and find out. Good faith reports are exempt from personal liability and kept confidential. May is elder abuse prevention month. It is time to reflect on what we're doing as a community to support people who are elderly. We all have opportunities to reach out to families, friends, and neighbors. This May, let's make sure that all people who are elderly or have disabilities are valued. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you ask, I'm Martin Wardlu, would you ask Commissioner Hernandez to contact me, please? It's not about an abuse, it's about a elder situation.
Oh, yes, mhm.
Angela, can you tell us what the process is once you get the report of suspected abuse or neglect? What does the agency do?
Well, you call Austin or you make the report online, like I said, and then the case is routed out to me, and then I receive the report, call collaterals on the case, and I do come out with, it depends on the severity of the case, and they come in as P1, and P1 would be like the most, the most terrible, where we have to come out within twenty-four hours, and those could be done on the weekends as well. We'll come out and visit with the alleged victim and see what the situation is like. And then, then from there, we'll just figure out whether or not it is happening or not. And if it is happening, we'll figure out ways to provide services to get them stable or, or close out the case if it's invalid.
And then you do file protective orders on behalf of some of them?
Um, we can, it just depends on, on the case, but it's pretty, has to be really severe for us to get to that point.
And that's happened here in Valverde County?
Uh, yes, it has happened here, but it's, it's, it's not very often, not very common, but it does happen, especially with adults, because adults have rights to make the decisions, to make decisions, and they can live however they want to live. And so it just depends, the most, the key is their capacity, whether or not they have capacity to live, or to make decisions.
And then those that can't make decisions, you do, pointing with the direction of guardianships and things?
Right, mhm, right. Just to get out, if I have any questions?
Yeah, let me think.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
All right, next, we have part four from the GAA grant, Lofton Air Force Base, Westgate.
Judge, Commissioner, Court, good morning.
I've provided the progress report in the packet, just to go over a few things that they're working on this month, this month, we'll see a considerable amount of completion, is the concrete paving, the final roof inspections, the parking lot grading and paving, the final work inside the bays and the drywall paint and finish for this month. Couple of concerns they're working on, and I think they've been resolved, is the roof testing issues and the Tech dot, um, are concerned with drainage, but that's been addressed and they're moving forward. I've included a list of fifteen change orders, brief description, the amount of days that it affected, the total amount of the project, and the cost. Over the, the last fifteen, or the total of fifteen change orders, it has increased the contract, contractor's price, it's increased it by a hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seven cents, and increased it twenty-one days. So therefore, the completion date is June twenty-first, twenty seventeen.
I've got a question. That hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, that'll come out of that four hundred and some odd thousand.
That's correct.
And then when you get to page two, though, we've got unobligated grant funds of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And just to throw this out there, but what are we going to use that for? We couldn't use it for the change orders?
It has been used for the change orders.
This hundred and eighty-two?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, we're supposed to come out of the change orders. I mean, the change orders are supposed to come out of that funding, and once all of that's used up, then we go to our money.
Twenty-six, that's what I'm saying. The way it looks like we're doing it right now is taking the hundred and twenty out of our four something. And, yeah, I mean, but, and that's what I'm bringing up, when we discussed this was, if we don't use the funds that are unobligated, thank you, brother, was that, we need to use what's, what's within this grant first, and then we can use the four hundred and some odd thousand dollars afterward, because we didn't set up a mechanism to say that we're going to use out of the four twenty-six and then we're going to be able to pay ourselves back, right? We never set that up, so I mean, we need to use this one eighty-two first.
There's a hundred and eighty-two remaining after all the change orders are approved.
But did we pay the change orders out of the?
Out of the grant.
Oh, we did pay it out of the?
They're obligated.
Okay, well, I just thought that they were out of the four twenty-six.
They're executing change orders, so they're, they're part of the grant, they're funded by the grant. After those fifteen change orders are funded, you got a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars remaining.
So we didn't pay them out of our four, we requested reimbursement for them.
That's, that's correct. My understanding is they could have been paid out of the four, but as we get reimbursed, that goes back to the.
That wasn't the answer you just gave me. We just need to make sure that, that we're taking it out of the grant, and we don't touch the four twenty-six until we run out of grant money.
Yeah, we've not, we've not touched any local money. We can make the adjustments.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was, but, but it's being reimbursed, is my understanding.
Wait a minute. Or you make the adjustment.
It has been, change orders initially afterward are issued by us, because all change orders were coming out of capital outlet, the capital's managed with the four twenty-six, and that's what's been happening. However, we can just transfer those expenses over to the Westgate account and reimburse that whole expenditure for the one twenty-one.
Well, we've already got our money back from the state on the one twenty-one, right? Yes, yes.
Yeah, the thing is, though, that, that they need to do the numbers what's actually right, because this is.
Yeah, that, all, everything needs to come out of this grant until we run out of money there, and then we'll fund that stuff.
This number, the balance of one eighty, what is it?
One eighty-two and a second.
One eighty-two. One eighty-two. That's still a good number, I think it's just an internal adjustment that he needs to make, will be the four twenty, the four twenty bites out, because I know it was coming out of there, but, and I thought it was being reimbursed, but.
You need to fix it.
That's his stuff, he'll, he'll take care of it.
Yeah, we need to fix it.
Anyway, so overall, we just discussed, we just mentioned, overall, the project is still within budget, the balance around that, unobligated funds are under eighty-two.
You said right now also that the change orders added twenty-one days to the project.
That's correct.
Or does it look like with those twenty-one days, they'll still be able to complete the project on time?
Every June the twenty-first, on the first page, they put Wednesday, June the twenty-first, which is now, yeah, the, the grant, the, uh, date of completion should be no, no longer than August thirty-first, is that correct?
It has to be done by August thirty-first, because they're, they're fixing to ask us for sixty days.
I think it was thirty, it was thirty?
After the twenty-one already?
Well, I mean, that's what the next agenda.
Any other questions for that? We have one of the next agenda.
Any questions to ask? All right, let's put an X item, discuss plus maximum request for outright construction for sixty-day extension to complete all work at Westgate.
My question, is it sixty days plus the twenty-one days?
Yeah, that would put us way over the, the target date, so therefore, the opinion of our, of our engineer, Willis and Associates, he doesn't feel like there's sufficient justification to, to give them or to approve the extension. Their justification was they had slow pay, so they lost some of their subs, and in our review, that is a cash flow issue.
Slow pay.
Slow pay. If the, the state took a little while to reimburse.
I know, but we were paying them on time. We were paying our contractor, and we were sitting there waiting on money, but they weren't waiting on anything.
Well, they weren't paying their subs, because they weren't being reimbursed by us. There was a check that.
Okay, that one time, yeah, that's right.
So therefore, that's a cash flow issue and a cash flow management issue that needed to be addressed by the.
That was the one in December of last year.
That's true. So therefore, not enough justification, so therefore, the recommendation is not to extend.
Motion to deny.
There's a motion, can you second?
I'll do that, second.
Second. All right, all those in favor, they can by saying aye. If aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Francisco. All right, next, we have a discuss plus maximum authorized signature weather support severe weather, occupation MOU with Lofton Air Force Base.
Motion to approve, authorized, Judge, sign.
Second. There's a motion, second, any questions?
Well, this one says Roland, right, so it'd be given authorization to Roland?
Yeah.
Roland, sign. Roland, and my motion authorized. Roland, and the sure.
Okay, there's a motion. All right, all those in favor, they can by saying aye. If aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Thank you. Next, consider, all right, let's take a ten-minute break before we go down next one. Sorry, I forgot the timing. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go back to item fourteen, consider an act of contract between TRC Engineers Incorporated in Valverde County for land surveying for two easements in Tech dot CDBG seventy-one thirty, seventy-six, and authorize it, County Justice, sign it.
Thank you, Judge. The last meeting, Valverde County selected TRC Engineers for land surveying out here on Mr. Cameron's property, and they have their contract with the court this morning for approval, and, you know, meets and bounds survey, and also ensure the documents for the county to be used.
How about the motion, second?
There's a motion, second, any more questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor, they can by saying aye. If aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, next, item fifteen, discuss plus maximum on the road crew foreman and Mr. Roy Muske to sign up on a federal surface program.
Judge, I didn't know whether the rest of the commissioners would want to, but figured I'd put it on. The road crew, we've had a couple of foremans go up and look at items, they're not, we're not on the list, this would facilitate them, they ought to speak with their commissioners anyway, and Mr. Muske's is not on the list.
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, they can by saying aye. If aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item sixteen, discuss plus maximum prohibited smoking at Valverde County high grounds.
Judge, I've been there seven years, and we've never had an issue. The people that smoked usually got down, went to the little area over there and smoked, but this year, we had a lot of people with e-cigarettes and cigars that were just amongst everybody, and when you get up underneath the grant stands, there's not a lot of airflow and, and at one point, it looked like stuff was on fire down there. And like I said, we've never had a problem, well, I mean, I've been there seven years, and we've never experienced it like, like this time. We did have people that would smoke, they'd go down there, you know, over to one side, they'd smoke away from everybody and come back, and everybody'd be happy, but it was just ridiculous.
Commissioner, is this just during events, or?
Just during events.
Okay.
Are you talking about banning the entire fairground?
No, I'm talking about the grant stands areas.
Just the grandstand.
The grandstand areas. The grandstand areas and up underneath through the concession stand. The grandstand areas and up underneath through the concession stands, right?
And do you want to designate a place for them to smoke?
We could.
I think that would make it easy.
We can designate a spot out there, away from, they usually come off the stairs and walk, like, towards, towards the back of the fairgrounds, up around the palm trees in that area, and that's usually where they smoke. But this year, we had a couple people with e-cigarettes, and it was just, it was terrible, and a couple people with cigars. And it seemed like when they started smoking, it was like everybody thought it was okay, and you had several complaints from parents.
So we're only gonna ban it within the stands, in the grandstands?
Within the grandstand area.
In the event, in an event.
In an event. I'm gonna make a motion to ban smoking and e-cigarettes within the concession stand and grandstand areas only during time of events, and we'll designate an area for them to smoke.
Okay.
And smoking includes e-cigarettes?
E-cigarette.
Okay, and are you gonna want an ordinance prepared for that?
That would be good.
Mm-hmm. I thought we talked to you about that.
I mentioned it, but you never said yes or no.
Okay.
My bad.
Yes, your bad.
All right, there's a motion, and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, they can by saying aye. If not, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item seventeen, discuss post-action on lease agreement in Valverde County and RBM Radio First Annual Father's Day Cook-Off for the use of Valverde County fairgrounds.
Motion to approve the lease.
Motion, second. Any, all those in favor, they can by saying aye. If not, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Item eighteen, discuss post-action on the use of grassy area on main entrance of Valverde County fairgrounds for bazaar or yard sale and allow the judge to sign lease.
We have had two different organizations come up and want to have, like, a yard sale or a bazaar, to be able to sell, to be able to rent booths in order to sell stuff there in front.
It's like a nonprofit deal.
It's their nonprofit, one of them is a nonprofit, one of them's trying to do something to raise money for another nonprofit. I didn't know how to approach this, figured I'd bring it to y'all and figure this out. They, they've given us a date, and they said, no, if we could, if we want to allow that to happen at the fairgrounds on the front, that would be step one. And then, if we get the paperwork together, and it's between meetings, if we could get the judge to sign, and then bring it back afterwards. Because there might not be enough time for these people to go between meetings.
I don't have an issue with, for like nonprofits and stuff trying to raise funds, but if it turns into a flea market, then I got the problem.
And that was the same thing that I told them, I said, we're not gonna get approval if every time we turn around, somebody's just coming up to make money, and it's not going to a charitable organization.
And so you're gonna designate an area?
It would be, as soon as you come into the fairgrounds, they're on the left-hand side, that grassy area right up front, closer to Main Street.
And do you want this to be added to the fairground rules?
Well, we have a, we already have a fee set for it, for the grassy area, so I thought that was already part of it. What is the fee on that? It's two hundred and fifty dollars for that area up there, the grass.
So why are we bringing it up?
Well, because the problem that I had was, and like I told them, so they wanted more clarification than what I could give them, one of the organizations wanted to start, it's gonna be like a yard sale. I mean, and it's not gonna be for a charity organization, they're doing it for themselves for profit. So we could end up with a thing, every week, we end up having a garage sale up there. And like I told them, I don't, I don't have the authority to say yes, I need to bring it to the court to figure out what they're gonna wanna do. But my opinion is that we don't wanna turn that place into a flea market. But that was just my opinion, and he says, well, can you take it to the court? Yes, I'll take it to the court.
So basically, it's to, that area is designated for sales, yards, well, not really yards, but sales of bazars for nonprofits?
Nonprofits.
Okay.
They didn't like my answer, so I told them I'd go ahead and bring it to the court.
I don't want a flea market up there where we got every weekend.
That's one day at a time, right? It would be the only, and again, again, if you open the door to one of these people that want it, it's basically gonna be a flea market, and they're gonna wanna do it every weekend. We will have a flea market up there. I didn't think it was, that's what, that's what the fairground was intended.
And then you require city permits and stuff?
Anything, anything, since it is within city limits, that the city would require, they would have to adhere to. The only problem, the only thing was, if it was a charitable event, or for a nonprofit, it's one thing. But, again, these people wanted clarification, they did not like my answer.
I'll make a motion to allow it for only nonprofits that are, what is it, five oh one three C, approved?
Okay. There's a motion, I need a second.
I'll do it.
Second. All right, any more discussions? If not, all those in favor, they can by saying aye. If not, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item nineteen, discuss post-action on the selection of another engineering firm for the sports complex.
I, there's been some issues, and I'm sure most people have read about it in the news, with the firm that we selected. Well, I don't believe there's any issues relating to our projects or anything. This in project is a little bit too important, in my opinion, to be clouded with any potential problems. So I am requesting that the court undo the selection of Denim Bomb Engineering and select, was it LPA? LPA as the firm. There was only three points difference in the scoring between these two firms, so I will make that into a motion to unselect.
I'll second for discussion. Commissioner, have we signed anything with it?
No. We had only selected, we're in the process of negotiating a contract, and that's as far as it could go.
Can there's a motion, a second, all those in favor, they can by saying aye. If not, all those opposed, nobody.
Judge, this is for the sports complex, and I'd like to give a little bit of information here, just to throw it out to, and sort of lay the groundwork in case we need to go ask for money. The flag football, there's thirty-one teams in flag football. There's forty-one teams in the Darryl National Little League. American League has twenty-three teams. Bay Booth has eight teams, and then there's three teams in prep. There's one tribal, there's one tribal team that's thirteen-year-olds that use fields within the city and county. The Darryl Border Youth Soccer League has twenty-three teams, and the Laughlin League has over five hundred kids. So is there going to be a need for a sports complex? I mean, there is. The county provides eleven, nine, eleven baseball fields at the Sixty Acres, and we have the thirty-one teams that play football that practice and play there. So I mean, just for information purposes, I mean, it's going to be needed.
We have thirty thousand children playing every single day in this town. It's every vacant lot and field in the afternoon is full of somebody playing some kind of sports.
Yeah, and I have my grandkids, and most of the comments that I hear is, it's a shame that we have to go play our championship Peewee football in Brightville, because the school district doesn't allow them to feel free right now. All right, okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, they can by saying aye. If not, all those opposed, nobody, thank you. All right, next, item twenty, discuss post-action on appointment of members to the Amistad Land Zoning Commission.
Okay, I put this item on here because for the last three months, we've had to have a meeting, and we have not been able to get a call. So we need to either look at reappointing some members, or coming up with something that works, because we have not been able to hold a meeting for the last three months. I don't need to take action on this right now, but at the next meeting, we need to either bring names back to reappoint new members, or figure out how we get the existing members to show up.
What's your board right now, Bill?
There's, uh, four members. Five counting myself.
I'm on it, and I've missed the last two meetings. If we could reschedule our meetings for a different Monday, Monday is usually when my, I have cancer, I have chemo.
That's fine.
And that's the reason I missed it.
So who else is on there, Bill?
It's myself, Commissioner Owens, Billy Waley, Roy Muske, and, uh, Also. If we need to move the meeting, that's, I'm perfectly fine with it. Evening is better, or whatever works.
If we can move it, I can give you a list of when she's had in chemo, and usually, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays when we're out.
Okay.
So anytime, Thursday, Friday, or I can give you the Mondays of the weeks that we're having chemo.
Bill, on another, next item, when you put up this on agenda, can you tell us how much each commissioner has attended? Each person of commission, that way, we can, some people are not interested, we can reschedule. All right, next, item twenty-one, discuss post-action on changing the speed limit in Las Grises Boulevard from thirty-five to forty-five.
We, this was set a long time ago, it comes off of when the loop was extended across Ninety and ties into Las Grises. When you come down through there, it is at sixty, and then drops to fifty-five, and then this speed limit drops down to thirty-five. It's extremely slow, it's a very large area, there's a hundred-foot rideaway through there, it's a big road, all the houses are set back two hundred foot. So I want to increase that up to forty-five, because that's about what everybody's driving.
You got a motion?
I'll make, that into a motion to increase it from thirty-five to forty-four.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fordus. All those in favor, they can by saying aye. If not, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Thank you. All right, next, we have discuss post-action regarding the lease between Valverde County and the Office of the Sixty Thirty Retired Judicial District Attorney for the use of office space.
My understanding here, Judge, is that Mr. Baggy's already signed the lease agreement.
Right.
So I will make a motion to accept the lease agreement as presented, and have the judge sign.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second. Okay, second, Commissioner Wardlaw. Yeah.
Is that on the different, in the jaws office with that?
David and Commissioner Fordus worked on it together.
That's good.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor, they can by saying aye. If not, all those opposed, nobody, thank you. All right, item twenty-three, discuss post-action on item twenty-three, on October eleventh, twenty sixteen, Commissioners Court meeting, discuss post-action regarding security at the county courthouse, the courthouse annex co-criminal procedure art one oh two point zero seven one.
Judge, this item, the court had given me permission to go out and look for individuals to put in cameras and panic buttons. We'd gone out, the first price was, there was forty-nine thousand dollars allowed, the first price was seventy-some odd thousand dollars. We didn't get that price, I think, till January, first week in January, is that right, man? The first week in January, we'd contacted two other companies that were gonna give us prices. At the end of it, neither one of those two wanted anything, so we went out, we reached out to another company, the last one, was it EF, EF, EIS, or ECI?
INET.
What was it?
INET.
INET, INET, they gave us a price, and it was still above, we went back to them again, and the last price that we had last month was for forty-three thousand and change. But I thought the problem had been resolved, because we actually had a deputy up there, and that's what Judge Cole and the JPs had wanted. So that's where we were at. I think right now, Judge Cole wants a deputy.
I do. Commissioner Owens, thank you very much for the work that you put into trying to get some electronic devices and cameras there to help us. As we talked, Commissioner Owens and I both were of the opinion that although the technology is important, it doesn't offer us prevention. It tells us who may have committed the crime, because we might have photographs and things of that nature. However, it doesn't prevent it. I've spoken with the sheriff, I've spoken with Constable Berg, and I've spoken with the other JPs, and we are all somewhat of the same opinion in that we need someone there for prevention of these things. And it's happening more and more often every day that people are having troubles at the courthouse, and there's shootings in surrounding areas, and even at judicial officers' homes. There's, it's just becoming more and more widespread all the time, and we all feel that we need some presence there. Now, as you recall, back in October, I gave you a copy of the statute indicating that there, according to the Code of Criminal Procedures, Article one oh two, zero one seven, and I know Commissioner Wardlaw, you were not at that time, so here's a copy for you.
Thank you.
The security fund for the annex is supposed to be held in a separate account from the other security fund money. I talked to Mr. Lowe about this from the time I arrived here, he could never tell me, he was not able to tell me where the money was. And I understand from speaking to Matt that the money has been commingled, and we don't have an identification of what funds are available for this purpose. So we don't know how much money there is, and I'm sure, for Matt, it's gonna be a very historical search to determine that. Is that correct?
It would be a historical search, depending on how much comes to the sale. But the dollars, the dollars on the security fund, I mean, it's something that y'all would be able to provide, though, wouldn't it? The dollar amounts.
They'll collect it.
Yeah.
We collect it, yes, and it's.
No, no, I mean, so if y'all looked it up, we could, I mean, we could, that would be a good way, place to start. I'm not trying to throw it at them.
I understand, I understand.
But if, I mean, I think one of the deals that we looked at, Judge.
It wasn't sufficient to pay the salary of the deputy.
It was nowhere close to be able to pay the salary of the deputy.
However, I do feel like that it probably would at least make a dent in that, if not pay a good portion of it. Now, I've asked the others that were on the agenda last October to address you as well, if you would. The sheriff and the constable, Constable Berg is, as far as I know, is the only certified court security, what is the title? Specialist, I'm sorry, court security specialist here in Valverde County. So he knows exactly what we need and how it should be, and the money, unfortunately, comes to you all. Now, I'm gonna ask the sheriff and Constable Berg and the other judges to speak. Judge Barrera is not here, he's magistrating this morning. But I'm gonna ask them to speak to you, because we really need to do something.
What happened to the deputy, then?
The deputy's there, I'll let the sheriff answer that.
She, she was pregnant.
Commissioner, she requested a deputy that was assigned to the bailiff's position for medical reasons, to be reassigned to a different location until she overcomes that. Right now, we're shorthanded everywhere else, so we're doing the best we can with what we have.
In terms of being shorthanded, and this is kind of off-topic, kinda, did you also send out an email to everybody that transport isn't delivering documents from, taking mail from one department to another? And so that's been eliminated for the same reason? Because you.
Yes, that's been eliminated for the same reason. Actually, to give you a, we've had since the thirty, since the first, we've had seven MHMR trips scheduled in these last five, six days. So there've been seven or eight of those, so transport's on the road all the time. So, you know, we get calls, I think mail's not running, you know, we don't have the manpower to do it there. So everybody, you know, needs to do their own mail, and needs to get someplace, and needs to get someplace.
Do we, and this is obviously not something y'all need to answer now, but maybe we could think about having somebody that goes mail.
Are we getting off?
Yeah, that's in the future.
Okay, but we're getting off.
Now we're back.
So you don't, the employees don't, nobody?
No, she'd be reassigned to different duties.
But she'll be moved back once.
Eventually, we'll get somebody back, but that might be another six months down the road.
We can, we can do the cameras, we can, they have panic buttons that are working right now. The only thing that we were adding, that we were talking about, was getting away from central security, so the system would go directly to him. And then the cameras there, and then some other hardware for the doors. The hardware for the doors, we talked about it, and the JPs decided that that, it would be something that, that probably was gonna be more, it was gonna be harder to get into.
Yes.
Because somebody would have to push the button in order to get, if somebody pushes a button in order to be able to get in the second floor, somebody was gonna have to monitor that. We can do the cameras, we can do all that, but the JPs said that it's not what they want. So if we spend forty-three thousand dollars, it's still not.
What's it gonna cost to hire a detective? And if we hire one, will they be stationed there for the bailiff?
Yeah, the entry-level salary is thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
That's entry-level salary.
And they will be stationed there.
Just to add to, sheriff said that he was gonna request about six more deputies for the next budget year.
Six deputies in twenty cars.
And I'll go back, you know, you put the, you put the technology in any courthouse, and it ends up in dispatch. I got one dispatcher there who has tasked.
I got one dispatcher there who is tasked with other duties, answering radio, has officer on the road, that's your primary, that's your primary function, say to those officers. Now you put a camera, put a camera system in there that they gotta look at forty-eight different screens, you know, you know, technology's great, but you still have to have the manpower to respond to it. It can be sitting in the, it can be sitting in dispatch, that operator's tied up, something could be happening in the courtroom someplace, and that did, that operator is not gonna see what's going on on that screen. So you, so, you know, to support technology, you're gonna need manpower.
The position with eleven percent that we put in, and the eight percent, and the four something for insurance is somewhere around a forty-seven thousand dollar position where they're done. It's thirty-four for the individual, plus all the...
And you got how many in this courthouse?
Here? We got two or one?
No, right here, we got three over here.
Oh, I mean in the main courthouse.
We got three there.
You got three, but there's, they're not all there at the same time, you sked, they're...
Well, they take off the one break stuff, but there's, there ought to be three on the premises at, at any given time.
There's no way to put one in that other building? So they have three here?
And then there's times when there's docket or trials or whatever that y'all, sometimes they get more people up there.
And then transport supports, when there's a docket call or whatever, they have to take inmates in. Transport supports the bailiffs while they have prisoners in the courthouse. And I'm shorthanded there.
I can tell you that, uh, with the deputy up there, just her presence, a couple of times that I've gone up with individuals that were on the, in the first floor motor mounting, uh, when they got up the stairs and sort of saw the sheriff there, it was, uh, it, it was, they were different attitude. It's like you sort of followed them up to see what was gonna happen, and, and, you know, when they hit the, the second floor and saw a deputy there, uh, their attitude changed. Uh, you know, you sort of, you know, bad people are gonna do bad things, but sort of the people that are borderline, uh, you're gonna deter them with a, with somebody there. And one of the deals also that we looked at, you know, like what the sheriff said, you know, the cameras are gonna be good, but it's just gonna be after the fact, you know, we're gonna be able to see who did it, uh, not, not determine. Money? Where'd we get the money for it to say yes?
Out of contingency.
We really, it's, uh, I, I've seen it on a couple occasions, that we've had people downstairs, and, uh, when they got to the top after, you know, they sort of come on the hinge downstairs, and they got to the top and saw the deputy, just a three, four weeks she was there, five weeks she was there, it made a difference.
You know, you have a position that hasn't been filled for animal control, other funds there, you know, we can, you know, commingle that with, what's out of the court security, get a deputy up there, but still, you know...
Yeah, for next year, though, you're still gonna have to fund it from the other position.
Yes, but that's right now.
Yeah, but if we hire, if, if we approve, how long is it gonna take to get somebody? You still gotta go to the academy, you still gotta train.
I've got, I've got some people that, uh, are waiting for positions right now.
That are already out of the academy?
Already out of the academy. They, actually, they, they came out of the Uvalde Academy. And then going on further on the court security, there's, uh, it's either forty or eighty hour, it's a forty hour block that if anybody that works as a bailiff is gonna have to attend a, a training, and that's something in the state, this state legislature's coming up, probably be approved, and that's required. So all our bailiffs will have to go through that forty hour course. And, uh, I think contacts have been made where it'll be held here, so it'll cost, you know, minimal to, to get the training here in Doria.
Thank you.
Can we look through the numbers in the sheriff's budget on salaries and see where we're at if we had another one?
There, if you look at...
There should be some savings in there to cover.
There's, there's, there's people that have left, the position hadn't been filled. If you take about, if you, if you look at what his, his budget is for salaries, and what we've paid up to now...
Can we take action on this?
There's, there's money in there.
Judge Cole, money that your government is coming up, a few of those costs. Okay. This is approved, and...
One oh two seventeen.
Yes.
We can take action to hire somebody if we wanted to.
It's, yeah, 'cause it's general regarding security.
There's money with, there, there should be a savings in there enough to be able to hire this employee.
I'll make a motion that we hire a bailiff for the annex for the JPs under the sheriff's app or starting salary for that position.
Thirty-four.
Do you need...
There's a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Not all those in favor, they could by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
And just, just a, just a comment, I was just checking with Janie, whenever they collect these court costs, and Judge Cole said this comes, the fund comes from a court cost, there are reports submitted, so it may just be a, a matter of going back.
And if you can get those reports, put the numbers together, and if we need to offset some of this cost, move it to where we can pay some of the cost for that deputy or something.
Here's the item with the, um...
That would be great. I don't know how much money's there, but...
The last time there wasn't...
Okay, thank you.
It's not much.
Fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars. It was very little.
And I don't know how much they collect on an annual basis.
They say five for District Three, four, can't, four dollars for...
Yeah, it's, it's okay. I'm just gonna take hers. Thank you. We're gonna get off on something else. We've already done something really great, I think.
Commissioner Owens, that's a good one. Remind, remind, Commissioner Owens talks, that's a good one.
On behalf of everyone on the second floor, I would like to thank you personally, and on behalf of all of us, thank you for regarding the value of our lives and our citizens that come to our, our, thank you for checking.
I just think, I just think it's sad in these days and times that you don't have to consider that.
I have thanked the sheriff many times for sitting right there. Okay. Thank you. All right, let's go to item, item twenty-four, twenty-five should be together, discuss post action on approval of the use of the technology fund for judge, staff members to attend legislature update training provided by the Texas Justice Court Training Center in San Marcos, estimated estimate one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars in...
Do you have the money?
Yes, sir, I do. Uh, we have money in the technology fund, about sixty-five hundred dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, and that includes the item twenty-five, discuss post action with registration for the judge, and step after ten, workshop, uh, for four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve item twenty-one.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on both items. All those in favor, they could by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nobody? Thank you.
Thank you very much. You all have been very generous to allow us, uh, the maximum education, and we appreciate it, and we'll put it to use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to item twenty-six, discuss post action regarding the addition of two new smartphones for the sheriff's department.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor, they could by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye all those opposed? Nobody? Thank you. Item twenty-seven, discuss post action regarding the county library spectrum internet...
Motion approved.
There's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor, they could by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Item twenty-eight, discuss post action regarding the county's IT department spectrum internet service contract.
Motion approved.
Motion. Second. All those in favor, they could by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Item twenty-nine, discuss post action regarding the county's fire department spectrum internet service contract.
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, they could by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody? Item thirty, discuss post action regarding the county's library monitoring agreement between Sentry Security Service Company.
Motion approved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, they could by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Item thirty-one, discuss post action regarding payment in excess, not complying with current purchase policy.
I had an item on it, they called me this morning, and I'm sorry for that, I, they would have any, closed up the account before all bills got there.
Yeah, and, and the vendor should have included that invoice, and it ended up, it closed, it was a day difference.
Yeah.
There was a P O drawn for it, it just, it, the closeout didn't coincide with what we were doing.
We had gone over on a couple of the items and reasons we were, motion approved.
A motion, second. All those in favor, they could by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody? Thank you. Next, discuss post action regarding, uh, regarding the approval of payment schedule for R K W Land State Company.
Is this the guy with the library?
Yeah.
That is right.
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion, second. All those in favor, they could by saying aye.
All right, one of the deals I went by there this morning also, uh, he'd already cut the drainage, which I thought, I was impressed was a drainage that he had cut around the side that we hadn't taken into consideration.
Yeah. All those in favor, they could by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody? Thank you. Item thirty-three, discuss post regarding the authorization to auction or deposit of the Palan County Library old furniture, shelving, and supplies.
Uh, on this one here, we, we have old computers also that are, that it, we had from a long time ago, that we've had in storage. We've got some, um, I guess from about five years ago also, some other desks, some shelving, uh, that needs to be added to this. And we have a lot of other surplus stuff that has come from the library, we just can put in storage.
And have you already designated this surplus?
That's what this is going to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and what we're, what we're gonna do, uh, Mr., Mr. Whiskey, uh, we're going to, uh, four H, uh, the show barn, we're gonna pack everything on pallets, and we're gonna put it into, into that barn. That way we can take pictures of it and sort of auction it off there. Uh, they've already allowed us to use that facility, uh, starting in June, for a couple months.
Okay. I need a...
Motion approved.
Motion and second?
And to declare the item's surplus.
To declare the item's surplus and authorize the disposal.
All right, all those in favor, they could by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nobody? Thank you. Item thirty-four, discuss post action regarding capital expenditures, office equipment, three thousand dollars.
Do you have the money?
And office equipment, one thousand.
They do, yes.
Motion approved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, they could by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whiskey. All right, next we have item thirty-five, discuss post action on making employee safety training mandatory for certain employees.
Judge, can I make a mention? First of all, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Barrera, uh, Human Resource Director for joining efforts with our department, and we all do interact on many risk management issues for, uh, coordinating a lot of the, uh, training that we're gonna be having in the upcoming year. Uh, this item was put on the agenda because basically, uh, as you've heard, uh, from our visitors, and we hear from Pat, it generally, Valverde County has a first track record of attendance at various meetings that we've had in the past. And, uh, Ms. Barrera, out of her budget, has, uh, gone ahead and, and ordered equipment, uh, and certain types of videos and material, uh, that is expensive, and we intend to break people down on specific types of training that we deal with, basically the road crews and the various functions that are, uh, county employees, uh, in the, uh, different departments, uh, with the precinct, uh, department.
One of the deals you had brought to us one year was, uh...
Sure.
One of the deals that you had brought to us one year was at the backhoe and, sort of takeout backhoe.
Uh, I don't, I don't remember actually...
We have to got a card.
But that's what, that's the thing we're, 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 um, what, basically, my mandatory would be this, I'd say we put an agenda item on the court, on, on, on the, uh, item, on the agenda, of a particular training that we're going to bring in. Number one, uh, it would make the commissioners have a heads up as to when this training was to occur, so that their employees would know, their home and their employees. And number two, uh, would become whether this is mandatory or not, if I deal with, because we do have, in our, in our county, we have people that are doing jobs that they, they're, they're doing them well, they're doing the jobs very well, but they might not have been certified in that particular job, such as electrician, or whatever the case might be. And by virtue of that, have not been maybe subjected to many of the safety precautions that that particular job has. So this is what we, Juanita, would be caring about.
What are you asking us to do?
The biggest concern is we schedule the trainings as we have in the past, but the attendance is very low.
Counselor, do we have the authority to order our elected officials to send their employees to train?
If it's mandated by law.
If it's mandated by law.
Mm-hmm.
But this training, in this particular case, is it mandated? It wouldn't necessarily be mandated by law, because we don't fall under OSHA.
Yes, sir. So that would be something that they would answer. I don't know enough about the training, other than, um, it's...
Do you like safety training for employees, and backhoe training, and those types of things?
Um, yeah, if it's mandated by law. You, and the elected official could make it part of the job description, because that's the second part to it. But no, we can't force them to. One of the things that we have to follow is, under our safety training through TAC, we have to have training logs, we have to have, provide the employees training that they need on a regular basis, which is what we do. We set up the trainings as we, as we've done in the past, but we have minimal attendance. Uh, our biggest concern is the field crews. You know, we have, um, for backhoe, safety glasses, welding, all these trainings that take maybe twenty, thirty minutes, and we have maybe one or two employees attend that are from here in the offices, and the field people are...
So we've had welding training in the past?
Uh, well, no, we're starting to.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I, I don't remember y'all doing the welding, I don't remember doing any of that.
We are investing in training.
What I'm saying is, my question is, have you done it in the past?
Not a...
Go well.
Not that I know of.
No.
We got different types of welding training.
Answer is no.
No.
I just want an answer, yes or no?
Yeah, no.
No? Okay.
Juanita, when you say TAC, set up these safety programs, is this something that's contingent on our insurance?
contingent on our insurance? Did they say you're...
All of this hinges on our...
With the rest.
Our rates.
On our rates, on our workman's compensation, uh, rates. Uh, this is all contingent to that.
Um, and there may be a financial reason to make them go through mandatory, which would, you know, if it's financial, setting up salaries, blah, 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 that could cut into that, making it a policy.
But I mean, these trainings can't be bad.
No, they need to go.
I mean, if there's a resource for them, then we should have been doing them all along.
Yeah, but it's not about bad or good. It's about what you guys are gonna do.
I mean, I think everybody should go.
I've sent my guys, yeah. I've sent my guys, like we did with the backhoe training and all that. They got a little certification, went on base. If we had, went to base, they won't, they won't allow you on base unless you have that little card, uh, to use the front end loader, the dump truck, or whatever you're doing. If they have them, then they need to provide it.
And we have invested money in the videos, and they do have certificates that the employee will be getting.
So these also include safety training and those types of things?
Yes. One of the things that we encounter is when an employee encounters an injury, when we report it to workers' comp, a lot of the things they ask is, we need a copy of the job description, and it states on there, he is required to wear safety glasses, is properly trained in that, and everything like that. And then they'll ask for the logs of the trainings. And if those people's names don't come out, then we have problems.
Well, and the good thing is, though, that now you know that, uh, you can get them for us.
Yes, sir.
Now, get them for us.
We've got them.
Okay.
I think the safety training, uh, classes should be mandatory. At the end of the day, when an employee is doing a particular kind of work or job, and it's a liability of the AM or the county, I think we should make it, uh, just mandatory, that everybody should attend those meetings.
And Juanita, I know it's gonna be a huge headache, but the positions that you think, uh, would require this kind of mandatory, you could put that in the job description. And getting back to the authority, um, you wouldn't be able to hire a person unless they had that in there, or the commissioners could say, your precinct can't buy a certain piece of equipment unless you have somebody certified to. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of ways people can require them to do it, so.
Well, and along with that, um, we've ordered a video for orientation for new hires. It's like ten minutes long, and it just gives you a breakdown of training, safety glasses, like I said, uh, ladders and such, which is something that we're hoping to do when somebody gets hired, at the orientation process.
And maybe you could establish an orientation policy, because we've never had an orientation, like a new employee policy?
A more, a more...
Yeah, because that would be great.
Okay.
And then you could do it for the elected officials.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We are in the process. I've already contacted, uh, the driver simulator. Of course, we had him here about three years ago, and the attendance was rather poor on that, but I think we're gonna, part of the reason was that it felt pretty close to the Thanksgiving holidays, and I'm impressed with, like, a lot of our employees, uh, that's a slow period, take off extended time around the holidays. So we'll be bringing that back again. Uh, and that, I believe, is a, is a course that I think every employee should take.
I know another program, and we used to do it with state, when a lot of companies do it, is like these driving rodeos.
Yeah.
Where all the, the precincts in different areas compete against each other for the best drivers, and you kind of make a whole, whole day out of it, where they go through training and do driving tests, and, you know, the winner gets, uh, whatever.
Excellent. I'll, I'll see if that's available through TAC, or maybe we have other resources that can set that up for us, Commissioner.
You know, maybe we do a barbecue or something like that, or something, do a whole big deal.
Fund for the...
I know it's hard, but...
Fund for the county employees, that's what you're saying.
When we were working with the federal building and stuff like that, remember I told you there was a company that used to give us...
Private, construction company.
And they'd give us, uh, if they didn't, if they weren't able to come out, they basically gave you a sheet, just how to climb the ladder. You gotta have three points on a ladder at all, at all times. I mean, you know, some of that stuff we've gone over with them, but...
We, we do have, uh, Ms. Valera does, she's tapped into the log of training videos and et cetera, that will, will be pretty extensive.
You don't need that from us right now.
We need to...
Just ensure the attendance.
Yeah, if we just, uh, want to make sure that when we do have...
I'll make a motion to make all safety training video, or safety training by the HR mandatory for all employees that it is needed.
Second. Motion and second. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
You'll need to change the policy on that and bring it back.
All right, item thirty-six, discuss possible action on approval of subdivision bonds for a legislature branch of states.
Yes, and I've had them, uh, Mr. Martinez with the county attorney's office have reviewed that.
As a motion, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All right, all those opposed, nobody? Item thirty-seven, discuss possible recommendation by Commissioner Ward, like to reappoint Raul Ferro, Musky Junior, to a four-year term as Commissioner of Amistad Land Use and Zoning Commission?
Did he replace him somebody?
No, appointed. He only had a one-year term.
He had a one-year term. Uh, uh, he was the, uh, Mr. Musky was the appointment of precinct one, and they draw the straws, and he was a one-year, uh, commissioner, everybody. So the years of his term should be staggered. He was up for reappointment, uh, with Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, I made a motion, second, Commissioner Torres. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nobody? Five zero. Item thirty-eight, discuss possible action authorizing the health inspector to work with the city planner to draft an inter-local agreement regarding subdivision compliance in ETK.
Motion approved, second.
Oh, just to know, there was an agreement back in the nineties.
I would be nice to have one now.
We'll look into it in terms of...
Sure, sure. Thank you so much for making that note.
Okay, there's a motion and second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nobody? Five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next, item thirty-nine, discuss possible action regarding the amendment to, an amendment of twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget transfer from eight thousand five hundred from postage to office supply.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning.
Um, what I need this for is that I need six computers for my collection department. And IT department has recommended that I try to get them all at the same time, because most of the time I get two here, one there, and...
Is this gonna affect your postage?
Pardon me?
Is this gonna affect your postage?
Well, at this time, I have already gotten enough money for, to start the new year, and I'm gonna have this much over, eight thousand five hundred. You know, last year said I asked more postage than the other, because the first year they would send out order cards. So this year, I'm gonna have that much left over.
So how much money do you have total on postage?
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
There's a motion. Need a second?
I'll take it, but wouldn't this go to capital outlay, not office supply?
Well, uh...
It's a capital, it's a capital purchase.
I could, I could have, you know, but when they started with the capital outlay, I asked for five hundred, I didn't get it, so I didn't think I could...
So does she have money in her capital outlay?
Were you asking?
No, we didn't budget, but what I'm saying is, this is a capital outlay purchase. This isn't an office supply purchase.
Well, since that's what I have, I don't have a lot.
I guess, no, no, what he's getting at is the wording, not office supply.
Capital, not office supply, they need to be moved to capital.
Which I have zero.
Understand that.
I'll make a motion to transfer eighty-five hundred dollars out of postage into her, into a capital outlay fund for her to purchase her computers.
Second, accept. Second, accept. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody?
And so you've approved that she can use that money to buy those computers?
That's just what I said.
Okay, so she doesn't have to come back, just for clarification?
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna, for making sure of that, which was...
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, next.
We're not too good going today.
Isn't a bad move?
Next, item forty, discuss possible action on, Sheriff Joe Frank Martens, to change personnel use of the county credit card from Juana Vera to Brendan Sabastis.
Second.
There's a motion, second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody? Five zero. Next, discuss possible action to rescind previous resolution and authorize county judge to sign the amendment, resolution of twenty seventeen...
Motion approved, second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody? Five zero. Next, item forty-two, discuss possible, authorizing the county judge to sign the amendment, resolution, local border security program.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody? Five zero. And item forty-three, discuss possible action, Sheriff Joe Frank Church, to give a budget amendment to the Ballberry County, uh, office, auto, auto line item.
What do we want?
Yeah. Does that mean?
Okay, we're, uh, later this month, we'd like to move some funds out of our automotive. Uh, we want to leave sixty, uh, sixty thousand in the automotive, uh, with the current amount, uh, we'll make that seventy-three, seven, twenty-seven, nineteen. We'd like to move, uh, to the office, uh, thirteen thousand from the automotive, uh, giving us a balance of twenty-six, six, thirty-nine, twenty-seven. And also, we'd like to move, uh, thirty-one, eight, twelve from the, to the uniform account, uh, giving us a balance of thirty-eight, three, seventy-two, fifty-eight.
Motion to approve. Huh? I didn't get it.
Yeah, we can't, I mean, we can't do it yet.
We can't do it yet. Once we get, it'll be later this month. We couldn't wait for the, for the gen, for the June meeting. Uh, once bills get paid, we'll, we will be reimbursed, uh, a hundred and four thousand plus. So once, that money is, well, once it hits, we'd like to, the ability to move it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody? Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item forty-four, discuss possible action on the pool of capital outlay to purchase a recertified soil AED plus accessories, one thousand forty-three.
Money in there?
Yes.
Motion approved, second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody? Five zero. Thank you. All right, next, item forty-five, discuss possible action on acting a ninety-day burn ban for Ballberry County.
Do you want a ninety-day burn ban?
Yes.
Motion approved, sorry, you want it?
There's a motion, second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody? Five zero. Next, item forty-six, discuss possible action on requesting second and third quarter in-kind contributions to Bagley.
Are we gonna wait on, do we have another item here?
Yeah. I think we have an item with, uh...
Item forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Forty-eight. Wait on that one.
It doesn't matter, we can discuss this in a minute.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioner. Um, basically, item forty-six, I'm just requesting that you take action on our request for our second quarter and third quarter in-kind contribution. If I recall correctly, I think the third quarter, or, excuse me, second quarter is ninety-nine, six oh one point nineteen, um, if I'm not mistaken, and the third quarter would be one oh two, five hundred. We're asking that this be approved and that be made payable to our county treasurer, Mr. Aron Rivas, and that it be placed in our DA holding account for our future use for our so use in the Department's office.
I thought y'all were coming in here for county, and we were gonna...
We haven't done that yet, sir. And we still haven't received these funds.
We're not gonna do that?
We're still attempting to do that, sir. So I just need some action on this so I can understand which way we're going with these funds. These funds were previously approved, adopted by the previous, uh, budget and by resolution, and I would like action on this one or another. Thank you, Commissioner.
I thought we took action on it, but I mean...
So, man?
Should we not?
Yeah, we're gonna wait till...
None of it go, we deny it, to the question.
Yeah.
Waiting for waiting beyond even buttons.
There's a motion. Anybody want to second that? You want to wait till the press report? Motion doubts. All right, next, we have, uh, monthly press report from Morris.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Motion approved.
A motion, need a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions?
All right, got, um, um, calm down there, man. Uh, I know this, we got to do it. The Law Library Fund, that fund is starting to, what are we spending? You know, it's starting to diminish.
One of it was Judge Calama, had asked for, please, so yes, and that was a big chunk of it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody? Five zero. Item forty-eight, discuss possible action on the acceptance of district attorneys, special funds, and opening yield accounts to county depository.
We don't have any authority to do this.
Uh, yes, sir, actually. Um, the reason I placed this on the agenda is that last Wednesday, we did receive the, uh, checks from the district attorney's office, um, three of these specific, and I just want some direction from the court to deposit as far as waiting on an audit, uh, to wait for the full audit, or if not, we can just move ahead and deposit.
The, the last order that this court did was for you to deposit the funds in account of reason until we did whatever we were doing.
Okay.
There, there's an audit going on, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, no, maybe?
What, what was the answer, sir?
Waiting for more than one?
No, just a second.
I thought, I thought that was the action we took.
Yeah, I think that's the action we took.
We will deposit those today, but we will start those three accounts. Unfortunately, Mr. Bagley cannot be a signature on that, on those accounts, only myself and Mr. Wengler. Any other questions?
No. What are we gonna do about him when he's paying?
Commissioner Nettleton, um, in terms of this particular item, Mr. Bagley had some similar items, so if y'all want to ask him questions or allow him to present information, this would be an appropriate time to do it.
I know you're running short on money to be paid. When are we gonna get to the point where we get all this under the county, get the budget, and y'all move under the county, and we do the payroll, and we handle all yours? When are we gonna get to that point?
Commissioner, I don't control that. You guys do.
No, you do control it.
No, sir, I've done everything that you've asked me to do.
Where's the budget?
I've already submitted the budget.
So, yeah, but there's no way you can run your money. We do have a budget.
It needs to be tweaked.
Do y'all have a budget?
I have a...
It was supplied to county, uh, to county judge and to, uh, Matt on Friday.
We need to get this issue resolved. You know, if y'all are gonna come underneath the county and go under our payroll and all of our benefits, then we need to get this issue resolved.
I think at this point, Commissioner, what we need is to finish up the independent audit that we have, and then get it done.
Well, I agree with you, I guess. What are we gonna do about it?
Well, if, if I'm making, if I interject, and I don't mean any, really, sir, I have been going, at least for the last week or two weeks, advising as many people as I can through email. We have documentation that affects it. Right now, in our payroll account that we have, which is being somewhat administered and approved by Mr. Wengler as well, before we do payroll, we only have enough in our payroll to take care of our current payment on May fifteenth, and possibly our insurance payment, health insurance, which is due on June first. I don't think we have enough in there to take the pay, care of payment towards the end of the month, either the end of the month or June first, whatever the payday falls on. So I'm asking, and I have asked, for an item to be placed on agenda, it's not on the agenda, but I have asked for the money that's in our DA holding account to be transferred over to our payroll accounts, and we can continue to do so.
You know which?
We have a DA holding account.
And that money came from where?
That money came from money that I gave back to the...
Oh, but where did it originally come from?
From different sources, which was approved by this court.
Okay, but depending upon the sources, for what you can use it for.
Yes, but it's all for payroll purposes, for the operation of the office. I'm sorry?
It was from the county's, your contribution.
Oh, okay, all right. It wasn't forfeiture fund or anything like that, okay?
There is, there is some in there that needs to be segregated out, but yes, the majority of that, one sixty five, was contribution from the county.
And Matt, the, the money that you, Matt, the money you identified that needs to be segregated out, how much money is that? Very little.
Okay, so the majority of it can be...
And how much is in that account?
I don't know, one seven, one eight, one two.
And that money anyways, that wasn't originally money we had sent over there?
Some of it.
Some of it.
Majority of it was dollars.
Yes.
And some of it was from the other account.
Correct. That's correct. And then additional amount was from enforcement fund, which I went ahead and voluntarily gave back to the county itself.
So they're all, they're all contributions to the DA's office in accordance to prior contributions, the way they were made?
That is correct. And we're asking for that money to be batch payroll so that both the treasurer and the auditor can monitor that, so we can payroll, make payroll until such time that we do come back for the county. To be quite honest, gentlemen, at this point in time, we're already halfway through, more than halfway through our fiscal year. So for us to come back with the county, yes, we want to, and I'm trying to do everything possible to make sure that happens, but I think it might make more logic if we wait until the start of the next fiscal year to do so. But that's a decision that you can make. But I'm only asking that we be able to do this, because if I don't have that money transferred over, I'm gonna have to let those seven people from barely come May fifteenth.
Y'all wanna talk more in the executive session?
I don't see why we need to talk about executive session. This is not dealing with legal matters.
Mr. Bagley, please.
Oh, you please, Mr....
Look, this ain't gonna get us where we need to get to. We either all figure out how to get along, we work together, one way or the other.
Well, I agree with you, sir.
And we've been at this for months, trying to get this thing transferred over to the county.
Yes, sir.
And this is simply a matter of a twenty-minute meeting to get this done. I mean, that's all it is. Everything's in play. If, if we had the budget back what we asked for, and we had the stuff that we needed, twenty minutes later, we'd have been done, this had been over, and that had been mapped. But here we are, six months into this, and so, you know, we all need to figure out how to make this work and get along. You know, the whole purpose of this is to bring your people back into the county where they have better benefits and better stuff. That's the whole purpose of what we're trying to do.
Yes.
It's simply a matter of a budget, the rules that we have to follow on how we do purchasing and payroll, it, it, it's a fifteen-minute deal, literally, and we've been at it for five months. And so, I'm very frustrated with it, but I don't want your employees to not get paid in the process of this, because we can't get our act together.
Well, the bottom line is, there are some legal issues tied in that, and that's why I asked if y'all wanna talk about it.
Then that's fine, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it and bring it back up.
All right, why don't we go at executive session?
Okay.
Pursuant to Texas government, call five five one point zero seven one, parentheses one, parentheses two, and five five one point zero seven one, parentheses two. And we'll come back.
Matt, can you give me the second and third quarters, how much he's asking for?
Twelve, thirteen, back in session. All right, uh, going on, okay.
Going up, I'm gonna go back to item, what was it at?
Forty-six. Forty-eight. Eight, item forty-eight.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the use of the money for the DA's payroll for one month at a time to come out of the, what was the account, the hundred and...
The district attorney holding account?
Yes. To come out of there, but only two weeks at a time, and then each month, we need to come back until we can get this issue resolved.
I'll second for a discussion. I just wanna make sure that that's the right account. Is that the one that had the hundred and seventy-one?
You said two weeks at a time, there'd be two papers.
There'd be two papers. So each month, this needs to come back to the court until we can resolve this issue.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any more additions? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody? Five zero. Thank you. All right, now let's go back to forty-nine. All right, now let's go back to forty-nine, HR monthly report.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, any questions? If not, all those in favor, negative by saying aye. I all opposed, nobody, thank you. All right, let's put up fifty, uh, the audit's monthly report.
No.
So moved, need a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, negative by saying aye. I all opposed, nobody, thank you. All right, item fifty-one, discuss for action on vacation leave over in Beverly County, and whether to put maximum controls in place as of May thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Did we take them off?
Yes, they've been suspended.
No, 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 I mean, did, if, nobody took them all off, no?
I've got two employees that are on there, uh, they'll be gone the rest of the month, and, uh, my two look like they were the highest. They're gonna be off this month.
So what do we gotta lift?
So we're gonna, we're gonna lock it down May thirty-first then? Use, gonna use lose status?
Except for the ones that are already off, I mean, they need to finish up their time rule. They'll be done, huh?
I have a question, if they don't take it, they lose it.
Yes.
May thirty-first, you know, they won't go into China and put the maximum controls in place.
Yes.
Would you need to vote something ahead, or is you okay?
Make a motion to cut off May thirty-first, anybody that doesn't use it's gonna lose it, and then for them to go into Tyler and put the, the maximums in place.
And just to go over once more, if you're at the maximum, it accrues on a monthly basis. If you do not use it on a monthly basis, it will be lost.
Now, see, that's where we, I totally disagree. Because you have all year to take it off.
Not if you put the lock in place.
And we, we had talked about that, I mean, it's not fair.
Yeah, that I have an issue with it.
That's not fair.
It may not be fair, but...
But what is it, what is it, how exactly does that work? What, you're talking about the lock?
Well, the lock, it, it, you have a maximum, you set at the maximum.
Right.
And then it will not let you accrue above your maximum. If you're at your maximum, you go into the month, you're going to earn, uh, your leave for that month. If you're at your maximum, it will just not accrue.
But our accrual system is on an annual basis.
Now, we went to Tyler, and this is what we've been...
Yeah.
What can Tyler...
What can we?
We could, we can leave it open all year long, and then just go to a December thirty-first cutoff date. We could do that, if you choose to.
And we talked about that the last time.
Mm-hmm, we did.
And, and to do that...
And then at, at the end of the year, you lose, if you didn't take it, you lost it?
Yes.
Well, that's not the way I understand it.
Well, he's saying monthly, you're gonna lose it. I don't want it lost monthly, I want it, we, we need to accumulate.
If you're at a max, how are we gonna accumulate more if you're at a max?
I understand that, but you can accumulate it as long as, as long as you're at your max, and your accumulation is doing this fiscal year, you should be able to take it towards the end of the year.
What we can do is, we can leave it open.
Matt, Janey had a question.
Yes.
Sorry.
Let me see if I understand this.
Because I have several of my girls that need to be off by the end of the month. Real quick, um, the way I understood the policy, that's in the policy manual, if you
reach your max, you no longer can accumulate, but it says nothing about freezing it and forever not taking it until you know that...
Correct, but that's your, if you're at your max, how are you gonna accumulate?
No, if you're not accumulating, that's what you're losing, but not the way you're talking about doing it on Tyler. You're talking about that they can take a day if, if they, that the day they earn is the day they gotta take within that month.
Correct.
If we go to the freeze system, if he freezes it, then...
But you can freeze it.
You don't have to take it, but you're just never gonna have that day. You don't have to go home, because you're not gonna have it. It's not gonna accumulate that day, that, that day for that month, you're not gonna accumulate any additional stuff.
Do you understand what they're trying to... Okay, thanks.
But I don't think that's right.
We can't, we can't freeze it.
We can't, or we can't...
Well, my opinion is not to freeze it, they, they need to be allowed to take it during this year.
That's a great point.
Right?
Yeah, that's a great point. Most entities run until the calendar year. They, they, they will let you, uh, leave it wide open.
Yeah.
You can accumulate it any year.
Well, we were, well, we were trying to take care of with this May thirty-first...
It was a past stuff, yeah.
And we had so many hours and so many days that nobody was taking, we had to get that cleaned up. That should be cleaned up from what we just did come May thirty-first.
So now you wanna leave it open till...
Well, they have till the end of the year.
But if you're, at the end of the year, if you're at a max, and then come January, and you...
Yeah, but they have all, they have all year to take it because...
If they don't take it by December thirty-first, then they're gonna lose it, that's a, that's the employee's issue.
So what's the difference?
Well, because they don't get to accumulate.
You have between now and December to take it off, otherwise you're not gonna accumulate any additional hours for the rest of the year.
That's not fair. And then if, come January, if they're at their max, January first, then on January thirty-first, they're still not gonna...
Well, that's what, that's what he just said. They're gonna have to take it. Between now and, and December thirty-first, whatever they're getting between now and December thirty-first for this year, they'll have to take before December thirty-first.
You're asking to zero it out?
Yes.
Because in the report that I provided to the court, anybody that was at the max, which must take what five year employee, isn't one hundred and thirty-six hours max. Anything over is what they've gotta use now. So you're saying between now and December, they've gotta use the remainder of the one thirty-six hours, breaking down to zero.
What, what the policy says is you can't carry over.
More than your max.
Okay, what is the carryover period?
It's, it goes zero to five, six, ten.
No, 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 no. Within the year, what is the carryover period? When does that end?
I, I do. We're trying to...
Right now, it's one...
What is our fiscal year?
October, October to September.
So the carryover means any time after that is carrying it over. So you have within that year to take it.
So you, you, you wanna work on a fiscal year, not calendar?
Well, either way, you can do calendar, fiscal, that's what I was asking, is what are we basing it off of, calendar or fiscal?
In the past, Commissioner, it was based on your anniversary.
Yes, but then we changed off.
And then back in July, we changed it.
To January one.
No.
Or December thirty-first, or something like that.
And we've been trying to work with it in order for employees to use it. The problem is, a lot of the employees aren't taking the time off, so they're earning leave every other month again.
Are they not taking time off, or are they not being allowed to take time off?
That, I can't say, but employees are not taking time off. And so you just earn more leave every month.
What some entities do is, they will cut it off on the calendar year, and then reopen it up and give you the full twelve months to accumulate and take.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about doing.
It does make sense.
But how are we arguing? Absolutely.
Okay.
You can still maintain your max, and you'll accumulate for that year, and you'll have to take off by the end of the year. We're making this very complicated.
You're sorry, but you did, you did good.
No, I just, I just took what was communicated to me.
We can, we can try to do that.
They can make it set up to do that, they just don't lock it, they allow it to do that.
Tyler can do that, right?
Tyler can do it, we just have to leave it open. And what that leaves available to is somewhere, that's not allowed to take time off.
That's it. But we need to know, the, the department head needs to understand that December thirty-first, that's it.
All right, okay, too many people talking about...
And the reason that we had the issue in the first place is because we had two years to roll in the month, so that's why it was a bigger issue. Hopefully going forward, it's not gonna be that big of an issue because we're not taking two years in a row.
Do we have the authority to penalize an elected official for not allowing their employees to do it?
All right, I have a question, too.
Now, typically, some...
Come on.
Some, some entities in that situation, what they do is, is they have them fill out an annual leave request, and then if that leave is, and it fulfills all the time that they would lose. And if that is denied by a department head, and you can show that they put in the leave request, and the leave request was denied, then there's actually a payout on that day.
Yeah.
But the elected official doesn't get them. So the next budget's...
That's right.
Go ahead.
Just so I understand, for example, uh, I, because my tenure with, with the county, I have accounted eighteen, with the, it's eleven point three three, but if you, if you go by the, by the number seven point five days, it's a little over, fraction over eighteen days.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what I have done in the past has carried over five days, which gave me twenty-three days, which allowed me to then, during the holiday period, take two weeks of that, that leave, maybe even more.
Okay.
Uh, can you still carry over those five days or not?
Not if you're at your maximum.
But you wouldn't be at your maximum because Mr. Stern is saying that he's gonna take his two weeks for the holidays plus them, so he's gonna use his leave and just have the five days. That was gonna be my question, because that's what happens...
Go along the same page.
Because Mr. Stern, you reduced it in December, so you're not gonna have your max because you reduced it in December. You'll just have your five days.
The, the good thing is, he understands what we just said.
I, I think I wrote it down, too.
All right.
You're not gonna lose it.
You don't need a motion for that.
And they're not asking.
All right, I just, now go to item fifty-two, discuss the file from an issuing to credit card to sixty thirty.
Now, this, this was supposed to stay...
What? The statement's different than what's there?
No, no, it's supposed to, uh, include, uh, Justice Dana's office as well. So I can put that in for next month and be back next month.
Can we go and do it now for both judges? It's too specific, kinda.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Too specific.
Too specific, okay, be back next month.
There's a motion, second, all those in favor, negative by saying aye. I all opposed, nobody.
You know, they can just send us an order to do one and save us all this trouble, right? They really do not have to deal with it, of course, they have the authority to order.
Make the motion, please.
I really like that. Thank you for standing.
And second?
I did.
Okay.
And that's on fifty-two, correct?
Yes.
Just because it looks to be treated like anybody else, that's what he said.
Well, that's fine.
But I just wanna make sure Commissioner Owens has that.
All right, any, uh, thank you, Matt. Uh, subdivision class?
Thank you, Judge. I do have one subdivision class, this is in, uh, Mr. Ford, this is, I'm saying, this is a, what's called, well, I think it's...
Is it?
Well, subdivision subdivision, which is, uh, which is that, uh, previously, one of the government's land at the end of First Street there, this is, uh, going flat for about a year now, and finally, they decided to do it this way.
Oh, it's Mr. Stern.
Uh, they decided to create eleven lots here.
You're paying them, Michael.
They decided to create eleven lots, uh, they're all served by city water and city sewer, uh, there was, they, they've done the construction on this already, in fact, I have in my hand a re, a receipt from the city for twelve thousand, six hundred dollars, which covers all the connections. All these people will have to do when they decide to buy the lot and want the connections, go to the city, and then their meter will be installed in there, but everything has been paid for by the developer.
By him making those lots that long, our street will deaden by...
Yes.
That's it.
That's it. Uh, and, and of course, this is, the, the lots will front Sabero, and now what we've done extensively, they've created a, kind of a, a berm buildup back here to make sure that the flow of water, uh, would not affect anybody on the county. And, uh, also, this particular plot fell under, if you remember, we amended the, the preliminary plot rule that if, uh, this is the final plot, this is the first time it's come to the commission, because it didn't require any construction contract or any, uh, any, uh, they've already built the subdivision.
In other words, uh, this complies with the model...
Complies a hundred percent.
Subdivision rules.
For twelve thousand, six hundred dollars fully included.
Motion to approve, second.
A motion, second, all those in favor, negative by saying aye. I all opposed, nobody.
Thank you all very much.
Any suggestions to compliance?
No, no, not.
Uh, approve monthly report from elected officials, so moved. Need a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Second, all those in favor, negative by saying aye. I all opposed. Approved bills?
Move.
So moved.
You have anything, do you have?
I do, I have two.
She was getting antsy over there.
I had a motion, I need a second before we discuss. A second, second? Okay.
We have two payments for, uh, bar dues that we received late that need to go out.
Bar dues?